Welcome, everyone, to the Town of Southwest Ranches Council Meeting. If we can please call the roll.
Mayor Bright Cruz.
Here.
Vice Mayor Kozinski.
Here.
Councilmember Albretton.
Present.
Councilmember Hartman.
Here.
Councilmember Jablonsky.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Great, thank you. If you please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we have some presentations this evening.
Proclamation for Mayor's Monarch Pledge Day. Whereas the monarch butterfly is an iconic North American species whose multi-generational migration and metamorphosis from caterpillar to butterfly has captured the imagination of millions of Americans, whereas both the Western and Eastern monarch populations have seen significant declines with less than 1% of the Western monarch population remaining, while the Eastern population has fallen by as much as 90%. Whereas Southwest Ranches recognizes that human health ultimately depends on well-functioning ecosystems and that biodiverse regions can better support food production, healthy soil, and air quality, and can foster healthy connections between humans and wildlife. Whereas cities, towns, and counties have a critical role to play to help save the monarch butterfly, and Southwest Ranches is striving to become a leader. Whereas on March 30th, 2024, Mayor Steve Bright Cruz signed the National Wildlife Federation Mayor's Monarch Pledge and have committed to taking meaningful action to protect the monarch butterfly. Whereas every resident of Southwest Ranches can make a difference for the monarch by planting and encouraging the growth of native milkweed and nectar plants to provide habitat for the monarch and pollinators in locations where people live, work, learn, play, and worship. Whereas Southwest Ranches has committed to participating in habitat conservation efforts, providing habitat for monarchs as they make their annual journeys, raising awareness about the need for monarch butterfly habitat, educating the public, and building awareness by engaging the community, maintaining our community wildlife habitat certification. Now therefore be proclaimed, the Town Council of the Town of Southwest Ranches, annually, the Fourth Thursday in January shall be recognized as Mayor's Monarch Pledge Day in the Town of Southwest Ranches. Further, the council urges all citizens to participate in community activities that support and celebrate monarch conservation.
Great, thank you. It's just another way that we can celebrate our rural side and appreciate everybody that has participated in this. It's been, it's been a good event for our town. All right. We have another special presentation that April is the Seek Awareness and Appreciation Month. They do so much for us year-round, and in so many ways, they're such a vital part of our community. We really appreciate all that you do, and I'm really pleased that we have this proclamation this evening.
Proclamation of Seek Awareness and Appreciation Month. Whereas Sikhs have been living in the United States for more than 120 years, and during the early 20th century, thousands of Sikh Americans worked on farms, in lumber mills and mines, and on the Western Pacific Railroad lines. Whereas Sikhism is the fifth-largest religion in the world, and today, there are more than 25 million Sikhs worldwide and an estimated 500,000 Sikh Americans. Whereas Sikh Americans pursue diverse professions and make rich contributions to the social, cultural, and economic vibrancy of the United States, including service as members of the United States Armed Forces and significant contributions to our great nation in agriculture, information technology, small businesses, the hotel industry, trucking, medicine, and technology. Whereas Sikh Americans distinguish themselves by fostering respect among all people through faith and service. Whereas April 15th, 2024 marks the three-year anniversary of the devastating act of deadly violence at the FedEx facility in Indianapolis, and we honor the eight individuals who were murdered, including four Sikhs, and numerous lives that were forever impacted. Whereas this year also marks the 12-year anniversary of the August 5th, 2012, mass shooting at the Sikh temple Oak Creek, Wisconsin, where gunmen murdered six Sikh Americans and permanently injured several. Whereas the Town of Southwest Ranches is committed to educating citizens about all religions, the value of religious diversity, tolerance grounded in First Amendment principles, a culture of mutual understanding, and the diminution of violence. Whereas today, the Southwest Ranches seeks to further the diversity of its community and afford all residents the opportunity to better understand, recognize, and appreciate the rich history and shared experience of Sikh Americans. Now therefore be it proclaimed, the Town Council of Southwest Ranches, on this 11th day of April 2024, does hereby proclaim the month of April 2024 to be the Seek Awareness and Appreciation Month.
Awesome, great. Thank you all. And then I believe we have another presentation that we have coming up, right?
Hello to all the team of Town Council members and Town residents. We have successfully completed the Sixth Annual Unity and Diversity 5K Run and Walk, and we could not have done it without you all. We would like to thank you for your help in making this event successful and celebrate our six years of collaboration. The success of each event throughout the years has allowed us to raise more than $60,000 in total for the scholarship fund, with 14,000 just this year.
That's amazing.
In the following years, in the following years, we hope to raise even more while continuing to collaborate with the town to further aid students going into college and the community around us. Thanks to all the help we have gotten, we were able to give back to the community as contributing members, not only throughout the donations we were, through the donations we were able to give, but also through our message of unity and diversity, as it was demonstrated all throughout the event with multiple people coming together as one. In further years, we would love to continue giving back to our society.
Overall, we thank the Town Council members for their continuous support, along with Uncle Louie, the Police Department, Mission Vita Church, and Hartway Churches, and all our numerous donors for all their time and resources towards making this event successful and helping us give it, give back to the community. We thank you all. Thank you.
We really thank you all. It's an amazing partnership. You do a tremendous amount of work behind the scenes that no one sees, and it makes it all possible. You all are amazing, and we appreciate you so much. Thank you. All right. Yeah, let's go down.
Absolutely, best part.
No, no problem.
Thank you.
Honorable Mayor and Council Members. Sikhs of South Florida are pleased to accept the proclamation you have just announced in celebration of Vesakhi, a great day of joy for the 30-million-strong global Sikh community. We thank you for your gracious recognition of our presence in the Town of Southwest Ranches. We also wish to thank you for your partnership with the Sikh youth in carrying out the 5K Walk/Run event for the last six years. Sikh youth puts their heart and soul in planning and conducting the event, but it cannot happen without your support and your leadership. Thank you for that.
Thank you.
To the best of my knowledge, including a check for this year, the 5K Walk/Run event has contributed $60,000 to the scholarship fund.
Awesome.
We are also very pleased to announce that the Sikh youth has embraced your Zero Waste Initiative, and they are already participating in this worthy program. So on behalf of the Sikh community, on behalf of the Sikh community, I thank you, the elected members, Mr. Russell Muniz, I don't know where he's sitting, but the Town Administrator, Deborah Ruesga, the Town Clerk, and rest of your staff for encouraging our next generation. Thank you very much.
Great, thank you. Thank you. Such a great partnership and all the hours they put in. It's really appreciated very much. Thank you. All right, and then we have one more presentation of a, from CPZ for our new facility. Are we going to introduce?
No, that's fine, Mayor. It's my pleasure to introduce Chris Zimmerman and Heidi Rodriguez from CPZ to talk about the proposed restroom facility at the Southwest Metal Sanctuary Preserve.
Thank you. I'm Chris Zimmerman, President of CPZ, and just want to thank you guys for trusting us with another project. We've done a lot of work with you guys over the last 10 to 15 years, and we really appreciate, and we really appreciate it. Thank you. But, and I've always been up here to talk about a project, but I want to introduce Heidi Rodriguez. She's not only your project manager and your project architect, she is Vice President of CPZ Architects. So as, you know, as we grow older and we start to look and move the firm in the new direction, so I want to let her, she's going to do the presentation today. She worked real hard on the project, and she is your project architect, so.
Great.
All yours.
Thank you, Chris. It's going to be tough to match that. Okay, so as Chris said, my name is Heidi Rodriguez. I am your project architect, and I've been working with the town for a little over a year on this project. It has been definitely a very exciting journey. So let's talk a little bit about your project here. But before we get into the weeds of it and into your site and your building, let's talk a little bit about the site considerations and some of the things that were the driving forces behind some of the design decisions that we made throughout this process. This is your proposed site plan for your property. Two things should stand out to you here. You're going to see a whole lot of green, and then you're going to see a whole lot of blue. And the blue are your existing wetlands. And so, one critical factor for us throughout the design of this project was respecting the wetlands and treating them properly. So as we, as we take a look at the site plan, we have to understand that these wetlands aren't just bodies of water, they're habitat for different species. And so it was very important for us to protect them, and it was important for us to stay away from them. So the town was very diligent in retaining a consultant that went out there into the property and did a wetlands report for us. That report was used for us to integrate into our site plan. And if you look at the way that the road is configured, if you particularly look at the diagonal of the road right here, you can see that we've done this very much on purpose. We're going in between those two bodies of water and then turning south, and that's again, to avoid disrupting a natural ecosystem. Second factor that we took into account while we were designing the site for this project is your existing event area. So we understand that if you look at your left, that area in light yellow, that's the site as you currently use it. We understand that you currently hold events in this space, and it was important for us to consider that throughout construction of the driveway, you guys still needed to be able to use that space. And so that was definitely something that was taken into account. And if you look at the way that the road over by Griffin, I'm going to point to it, the way that it curves around it, that was just to be able to give you guys undisturbed use of that space while the rest of the driveway is being constructed. Third, we have concurrent drainage improvement projects that are happening either concurrently or there's going to be an overlap in the timeframe for these drainage projects. And it was important that we take that into account for two different reasons. Number one, we wanted to make sure that our design was not going to be clashing with the existing drainage projects. And number two, we dropped it into our site plan as a means to let the contractor know that should they bid on this project, there may be some coordination with other people that may be on-site at the same time, and there will very likely also have to be coordination with the owner, just in case the projects somehow interact with each other. And then the final factor that we took into account in terms of the site is just the septic drain field. We understand this to be a cost-effective and environmentally friendly way of treating waste within the property. So with that, let's talk a little bit about phasing, okay? We've had multiple conversations with the town regarding the budget and the budget constraints for the project. And so what we've done for Phase One is we've broken out the meat and bones of the project. So basically, all the elements that we absolutely cannot live without if we're ever to construct this project. And so I'm going to go through those now. This is an enlargement of that site plan that I showed. And if you look at the number one over by the building, basically, the construction of the restroom pavilion is something that absolutely has to be a part of the first phase. The site utilities that are going to be required to feed the building, so you're, that's basically your electrical, your plumbing, and your water service going into the building. And then, last but not least, you need a way to get there. So the driveway and the paved parking is also included as a part of this first phase. Now, as you guys know, we do have a cost estimator on our team, and so the set was produced, it went to our cost estimators, and again, please understand that these are not bids. This came from our estimators, they're excellent, they've been working with us for many years. But basically, the restroom pavilion building came back at a little over $1.2 million. Then we have the site utilities are at a little over $40,000, and then we have the driveway and the paved parking at a little over $720. Okay, so all of that combined for Phase One totals to just a little under $2 million. Do we have any questions on Phase One, or should I just, Russ, or should I just continue, and then we leave the questions for last?
Any questions? I think, just go ahead and continue.
Okay, very good. It's not going. There you go. All right, so let's talk a little bit about Phase Two. Equally important, but basically, anything that didn't make it into Phase One is now in Phase Two. And I think these components are going to be critical as well to be able to give you guys what you guys were anticipating and, and basically to meet your vision of what this project needs to look like at the very end when we're done. So going into now Phase Two, if you see the different, the difference in color between the roadway over on the left side and the roadway on the right, basically, this is the remainder of that driveway that we are now constructing as part of Phase Two, and the reason that it is at a diagonal is because, like I said earlier, we are avoiding a clash or a conflict between the existing drainage project that you have going on here, as well as this one. So we've kind of turned it at a diagonal and included your T-turnaround there, and basically, this just gives you better access into these stabilized areas that I will cover in a few minutes. Okay. All right, so item number two is the landscaping trees. We all know that they weren't quite critical for Phase One, but we needed to have them for Phase Two, just because I'm sure that we all want a beautiful park at the end when we're done with this project. Next. So next, we've got the new perimeter fencing and gates. This was part of our PO. When I first came here, we had certain conversations regarding your existing fencing and the need to replace those fencing and the gates. And so if you look at the areas in gray, those areas are where we're going to be including new gates. So you've got one right at the entrance to protect your entrance into the site, that's on the north side. Then you have one on the east side, and that's going to remain closed on a daily basis, but should somebody need to exit out just as an emergency through the east side, then we're going to have the ability to do that with those, with those gates. And then, not one, sorry, go back for a second. Then you also have the man gate over on the west side that's also highlighted, it's kind of tough to see there, but basically, that's going to be also a part of Phase Two. And then probably one of the most important factors of Phase Two here is the stabilized grass area. Okay, the intention is to use this site as a multipurpose use, and so it's not just going to be used for parking, it'll also be used for events. And we've broken the, that area out into multiple areas. We've, we've basically broken it out into A, B, C, and D. You're going to see that in a later slide. But if you keep going, this is more or less how we envision the sequencing. Okay, so we have the very first area right by north of that driveway, okay, just because you're going to need to have access into, into your stabilized grass from the road. Then you have the area north of it, and then finally, this is your third. And then this is what we're calling the overflow area. Again, that's just access on the southern portion of the driveway. So the reason that we've broken that out into different areas is basically to control cost, okay? Because the contractor now, rather than providing a single price for the entire stabilized area, now will have to break it out into the cubic yards that we have provided in the set of plans, and therefore, that's going to give you guys a little bit more control in terms of what you're able to build, what you can afford to build, or maybe, you know, there's a certain area that you want to leave for the end, maybe the overflow comes later. And so we've, we've designed it that way so that it can be broken out separately. And then this is your final site plan. The dark green symbolizes the entire stabilized area. And then one more thing that I want to bring up are three light poles. They're kind of tough to see here, but basically, you see this one right here in yellow, we have another one right here in the corner, and then we have one right by the road. Now, these are, I want to point out that these are add alternates in the set. That means that there's going to be a separate line item, you may or may not go that route. It is not a requirement by code, and we understand that the site is going to be primarily used during the day, but we still wanted to make sure to put it in there, and then, once the project goes out to bid, see what those numbers look like. Okay? So by the same token, this went to our cost estimators, and these are some of the numbers that came back. So we've got the landscaping and the trees at approximately $140,000. Then we have the new perimeter fencing and the gates amounting to about $150. And then if you see all the different stabilized grass areas, I've kind of delineated here how we broke out those areas in the plan, so we have A, B, C, and D, and they came in roughly at around $200,000 each, or a little over. So the total number for Phase Two is a little under 1.3. All right, so let's move on to the fun part. Now we have the building. Let's go over the floor plan a little bit. Now, understand that we oriented this a little different to how you have it in the site plan, just for the sake of being able to show this properly on the screen. North is now on the right, right here. So let's talk a little bit about the men's restroom. The men's is going to feature two water closets, in other words, two toilets, and it's going to have two urinals as well as three sinks. One of the sinks is going to be a part of the private ADA space, and then the two other sinks are going to be a part of the public area. Same thing with the ladies restroom. The only difference is obviously, we don't have any urinals, so we've got four water closets on here, and then the same configuration on that side with the single sink in the ADA and the two out in the public. We also have a large storage space, and basically, this is going to host anything that you want to put away for a, an event, for a party, tables, chairs, tablecloth, anything that you would use if you were renting out this pavilion for an event. And then, last but not least, we've got the plumbing chaise. And the reason that the plumbing chaise is in the middle, and it is this wide, is because it makes it very easy to maintain. Should a toilet have to be replaced, or maybe a valve has to be maintained, it's very simple to just open the door over on the storage side and then exit out the, the other way, or even exit right back into the storage, rather than having to destroy your finishes, having to break through walls to replace anything. This is, this is, this usually works out very well for us in terms of maintaining. And then, a little bit more here, a little bit more specific regarding the flooring. We, we have done a lot of research regarding what flooring would be best used in high-traffic areas, and we've gone with an epoxy flooring. We've, we've used it in multiple buildings, and it's very, it holds up very well to cleaning, to chemicals, to a lot of foot traffic, and we've installed it. I mean, Chris has installed it in multiple buildings, and 10, 15 years later, it's still in excellent condition. And aesthetics is also a concern, you know? Epoxy is going to hold up very well also from that standpoint. And then in the areas that are not as, as heavy foot traffic, like the storage area and the seating area, we've got sealed concrete. Same with the plumbing chaise. And this is basically a rendering of what we think this project could look like. This is what we have designed in our set. It was very important for us to maintain a cohesive color palette, and December, who's here, she has worked really hard with the rest of the town just to figure out what those colors are going to be and to finalize what that color scheme is going to look like. That's why I've written "flexible" on here, because I know that some things are not exactly set in stone yet. But one other thing is we wanted to make sure to maintain the look and the feel of the existing buildings and the surrounding areas, that openness and that, that feel of Southwest Ranches. One other thing is we are keeping a metal standing seam roof, similar to the one that you guys have here. It's not easy to see in this image, but you'll see it in the other ones. Now, one thing that I want to point out about this rendering in particular are some of the add alternates that we have included in our set. Okay, just want to make sure that it's clear that some of these things may or may not happen. And two of the ones that are shown right now on the screen are the downspouts and the gutter. Now personally, I do feel strongly about keeping them if we can. This is the way that we drain and redirect water off the roof, and it helps protect the envelope of the building. It protects your finishes. But just know that it is an add alternate. Same with the stone veneer and the sealer. The sealer was actually, um, Russell's very important contribution to this project. Uh, we did reach out to the manufacturer, and they did highly recommend that if we do go with the stone, that we also include the sealer. Just know that that's going to be a separate line item on there. And it is not a part of the base bid. Couple more images here. This is on the back end. This is the view from the northwest side of the property. And then if you see, uh, the, the windows have been strategically located. They're really high, so you can't quite reach them. We've also specified frosted windows. We want to make sure that you don't have a person out there that can actually look into the restrooms. And from a design standpoint, we've also aligned them to the louvers that are located at the bottom. The louvers are required for ventilation. Here is another view. This is, uh, the view from Dykes Road. It's the view from the east. And this is basically where you get off, and, uh, you basically get right onto that sidewalk and into the covered porch. One thing that's not shown on here, but that I do want to bring up, is, um, this area right here is going to be striped because this will serve as your loading space. So you're going to have the ability to have a truck come out there, back up into that loading area, and then deliver anything. You know, maybe you guys rented chairs and rented, uh, I don't know, tables for a larger event. So that truck is going to have that ability to, to back up in there and store it into your storage space. Couple more views here. This is just that facade. This one shows you the, the metal standing seam roof a little better than the other views. And then what else? We've got here, uh, just a view from the southeast. Um, the last time I was here, we had talked about, I don't remember exactly who brought it up, but we felt that it was a very good point. Somebody said that it was going to be important for anybody that was driving down Griffin Road to be able to look at this space and see the picnic tables and see the events, and, you know, want to engage basically with this project. And so we have oriented the building in that manner, so this is the view from Griffin Road. They have, they're going to have a, a direct line of sight into the picnic tables, and this is just a little bit of a fun image with somebody out there celebrating a birthday party. You've got the kids in there. And, yep, this basically concludes the presentation. Thank you guys for having us.
Yeah, thank you for walking us through that. Appreciate it. Um, any, any questions, uh? Comments from the council? Yeah, go ahead.
Uh, if you could jump back to the restrooms. Unfortunately, it's, I happen to be an expert at it, so. From what I've been, uh, from my path life. Um, what type of ceiling are you putting in there? It looks like it's a grid.
Okay, so the ceiling in the interior is just going to be a hard ceiling. Just stucco, hard ceiling. Yes, but if you're talking about this ceiling right here, it's a tongue and groove wooden ceiling.
No, no, I'm talking about the interior.
Oh, the interior is just a, uh, just a hard ceiling.
So it'd be just drywall?
Yes, basically.
Okay.
Good answer. In terms of the phasing, it would make sense that we need to move up the fencing so we can secure the property once we start doing this development work. We have had vandalism at our parks, and I'd hate to see a jewel like this be built and be destroyed pretty quickly thereafter by somebody. Plus, our parks close at dark. At the other parks, we have somebody comes out and locks up the parks. So I think we need to work with the phasing just a little bit there because we're leaving this building at risk once it starts construction.
No problem. We kind of expected that a little bit.
Yeah, yeah, and I get it with the money. Um, another thing is the tongue and groove wood. I would suggest you look for something that's relatively maintenance-free. Um, something that could be pressure cleaned, that isn't going to have to be resealed every couple of years. I have experience with outdoor woodwork, and it, it doesn't seem to last very long unless you put teak in, and I don't think you're anticipating teak. You're probably looking at cedar or something along those lines. But maybe just a stucco ceiling in there.
Yes, southern yellow pine is what we've specified. Um, and a termite product to go over it, just to, uh,
I'm less worried about termites and, uh, spiders and bugs and all the things. Because we don't have a large maintenance budget for the parks. We wouldn't have a crew going in there quarterly or monthly cleaning it with pressure cleaners, so we need to minimize that as best as possible.
So I will say that as part of the add alternate for the exterior ceiling, we've also specified just a normal hard ceiling for the exterior. However, it did come back a little bit more expensive. But it is going to be, yes, ju- uh, we were surprised as well. But the reason it came back a little bit more expensive is because since you have the wooden roof trusses here, just the way that the construction, uh, we have it detailed, it was just easier with the tongue and groove. And so it ended up coming back a little bit cheaper than the hard ceiling. But it is a bid there. It is a bid item. And so it can be selected if you guys wanted to go that route.
And what you, when you say hard ceiling, just stucco and riblet?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep, plaster.
Alright. The other thing is I like the big water, uh, the water chase in between. We have a problem at our parks with people stealing water, believe it or not. Not twenty gallons, hundreds of gallons. So it would make sense to not have any exterior hose bibs. If we need a hose bib for maintaining, you know, hosing things down and all that, probably should be in the water chase area.
Did we put it in the storage?
Or we use a key lock system on it or something?
Simple, just to put it.
Yeah, that's definitely a great point.
Yeah.
Okay, that's all I had. Thank you, though.
Yeah, David.
Thank you. Um, a couple of things that I, I really like to see put at this facility, um, some equestrian ties, horse mounts, and maybe even, uh, a small paddock, kind of like we have out in front here. Someplace to keep horses, keep one horses come up there. It's really important. And, um, to take Bob's step, one step further, I'd like to make sure that we have measures in place that this does not become a homeless gathering place. Because we kind of had that over at, um, the Polikov Park. We had homeless hanging out there, so we don't want that at all. That wraps me up.
Great. Thank you, David. Any other comments? Yeah, it looks beautiful. It looks very nice.
Thank you.
Um, I wonder, Emile, obviously, uh, from a cost standpoint, um, this came in quite a bit higher than what we had anticipated. I know we've had conversations about, um, the sources of the funds to cover this. Can you, can you speak to that?
Um, quite frankly, Russell had delineated.
I'll be happy to take that. So, so we had allocated or projected that the cost for this project was going to be about one point three million dollars from ARPA funding. So we had allocated from the funding that we had received for ARPA, one point three million dollars for this project. And we identified now with the latest cost estimate that it's going to cost us approximately two million dollars. So we have approximately a seven hundred thousand dollar shortfall, so we were trying to figure out, well, how can we make that up if we're going to move forward with this project? And so what we identified was that when we did allocate the different projects for ARPA, we did not assign, we purposely did not assign some funding from ARPA because we figured some projects might have a cost overrun. So we had identified that we would ha- we have about three hundred thousand dollars of ARPA funding that has not been assigned, so if coun- if it was council's pleasure to move forward, we could assign that three hundred, and that's one of the things that I would ask you, uh, would be to assign the three hundred thousand dollars from unassigned ARPA projects to this project. That brings you to one point six. We still have about a four hundred thousand dollar shortfall. Now, we have, uh, we have been awarded a FERDA grant for two hundred thousand dollars that we would apply towards this project, so long as it's not vetoed in the, in the governor's budget. Um, so that would bring us to one point eight. We would still have approximately a two hundred thousand dollar shortfall. So what we would ask is if we're going to move forward with this project, that we ask council to, um, basically allow us to transfer two hundred thousand dollars from unassigned fund balance to this project.
Gotcha. Good. Thank you for walking us through that.
Hey, Russell, I got a question.
Eight hundred thousand dollars from that would be from Tallahassee and the federal government. Excuse me, a million eight would be from Tallahassee and, uh, the federal government, and our contribution would be roughly two hundred thousand dollars?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
And Russell, um, the own, the measures that you're asking for deal exclusively with Phase One?
That is correct.
Okay, and, um, so there will be no financing, no bond for this?
That is correct.
Okay, and, um, and there's, uh, no tax increase, right? No tax.
No, none associated with this project.
Those would be deal killers with us.
I understand.
Alright, good. Alright, Heidi, thank you. I think I'm going to open it up to the public if they have any comments.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
This is a problem. First, let's take the location of where you're going to put it. Fifty foot from a paddock. A horse paddock. Where you're going to have parties and noise and people and music and everything else happening in there when you rent it out. Fifty foot from horses, a paddock. Wrong place to put it. You need to put it up near Griffin Road. That's where it belongs. Number two. The price of it, you're saying you're going to use the federal money from the American Rescue Act. I thought that money was going to be designated for the fire department that we were going to build. Something we desperately need. When I heard about putting a my blood pressure's up, excuse me. When I heard that we were going to put a permanent restroom facility there, I didn't expect to see a gold-plated thing for two million dollars in Phase One, and then a million and plus for Phase Two. What are you thinking? We need the fire department taken care of before we need this. Put a restroom facility similar to what we have at Fishing Hole Park. Maybe twice the size. Plus, this does not look like anything that belongs in Southwest Ranches. This looks like it belongs in Fort Lauderdale, Hollywood, or Pompano Beach. It does not say Southwest Ranches whatsoever. It says Fort Lauderdale, and streetlights? Who is? They have no idea what they're talking about. Redo it completely.
Yeah, I concur with Newell that, this is my first time looking at it, and it looks like it belongs in Fort Lauderdale. We've been so careful with every step we've taken with the town. I worked ten years on the Sunshine Ranches Equestrian Park from writing letters to the, um, board in Broward to give us the money. And initially, they wanted to give us five acres. We ended up getting twenty. So I'd understand a little bit about the layouts, and this is going to be an equestrian park. Doesn't look like, look at Sunshine Ranches Park. Look how friendly it is to the equestrians. We have water for the horses. We have, um, a pavilion that looks like it fits. And, you know, I think you really need to rethink this a lot. Please don't go ahead with this because the reaction of an equestrian to this is not favorable, okay? I mean, I understand they put a lot of work in it, but we've been so careful up to now, and Rolling Oaks has a beautiful park. Let's give it a facility that matches the equestrian, and don't put it fifty feet from horse farms. You're going to ruin those, those people's lives. Those horses are going to freak out with that noise. And be careful who you rent it to. You never know the damages that can be done. So I agree with Newell. It should be closer to Griffin Road, where there's easier access in and less traffic in the park for the equestrians to use the horses and enjoy the facility. Thank you.
I got a few things to add to that. It is right. It doesn't look anything like Southwest Ranches. Have, uh, the architects ever considered, uh, doing, um, uh, stone, the finished stone? The, the architectural stone, where you color the stone? Color the cement, and it looks like stone? There's a whole bunch of different colors you could add, which would, right off the bat, at least the floor, it would start to, to solve that problem. Plus, if you spill food on it, it probably won't be as noticeable as clean white cement. Um, and as, and as far as the, uh, the roof line goes with the down drains and all that other stuff, what's wrong with just a really rustic-looking pole barn? A long, big, wide pole barn for that type of area? With the restrooms maybe built inside of it? And you maybe have, uh, uh, a ceiling that, uh, looks more rustic with, uh, with the wood, uh, joists and that sort of thing. It doesn't have to be metal, but it, that would look cool too. Look at Bass Pro Shops. They use some metal joists in their structure, and they really had a guy that could think. When he put that store together over in, in Daniel Beach. Um, you're just, you know, it, like I said, that's, that's easy to make better. And certainly, tongue and groove, you're going to have a problem. You ever see what the, when, you know, when you get up at daylight in the morning and you see how the clouds of steam are coming off the ground? Well, that tongue and groove is going to get that. It's going to want to swell up. It's going to want to have water stains on it. And it's hard to refinish tongue and groove upside down. How much are you going to be able to sand it without dying from your, from your muscles in your chest and everything? You're not going to find people to do that kind of work, let alone do it right. So, um, oh, next to the road. You're tiptoeing through the wetlands. Why not just go right off of Griffin Road and put it there? That road you got is seven hundred and fifty thousand or seven hundred and thirty thousand, and you're not done yet. So there's a lot of work that could be done on that. Put a little board together with some ideas. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim.
I mean, first of all, I think it's nice you're doing it, but, um, I have two things. I disagree with having, not having any lighting, and I'm a dark skies proponent. But I think some small type of lighting that shines down for safety. Several of us have been to the barn for dances or bingo and walking to our trucks or cars afterwards, you know, because if it's well-attended, the cars are parked out. I, I mean, I think you want some kind of lighting for safety. And I also wouldn't put it too close to Griffin Road because the number of accidents we've had on Griffin Road. And I think every day we pick up the paper and somebody's driving through a shopping center or into a lake or into somebody's homes. I mean, I would keep it because it looks like it'd be an area that'd be nice for children's parties and that kind of thing. And so I would want it more set back somewhere appropriately than close to Griffin Road. Thank you.
Good evening. John Garotti, one hundred and sixty-second Avenue. It's a necessary facility. I'm sorry, that is just not rural, in my opinion. But another thing I'm noticing, when we have the fair there, if it rains or if it's really, really crowded with folks, those bathrooms are going to be overrun like madness. They're a little too small for the amount of people that go there, and I know it's not just for the fair, but the design of the building is just not rural, and I don't know about the parking of the cars right up front. Fifty feet next to horses? I'm not in the horse world, but they wouldn't appreciate that, so. It is a necessary facility because it's a nice area. I've been to that fair, and I go to the, the, um, the farmer's market. And it can, you know, there's, the restroom facilities are not adequate, and it's a, it's a space that can be used for, yeah, you say rentals, but it's mostly for us, not really just to rent it out, so I think a redesign is necessary there, but that's not a rural building. Not just my opinion.
Seeing no further public comment, public comment closed. Um, appreciate all the feedback. Um, certainly, this is a, uh, you know, a community facility that we want to be as, as fitting into our, our community as much as possible. Um, I do want to speak a little bit to the funding. Um, this funding is, is, so the, the ARPA funding that we received, uh, correct me if I go astray, but it was about nine million dollars is my recollection. What is it? Four million dollars, four million dollars. So this was a portion of it. There was a portion of it that is also set aside. This does not dig into that portion of it. Um, that was set aside for the, um, the site plan for the, uh, the facility, the public safety building. And so this does not in any way take away from that. Um, that money is also earmarked for that project, so, so this is, this is not having an impact on that project at all. If we, uh, you know, if, if we took from that, we would have, would disclose that at this time, but that's not where we've, we've disclosed where the But that's not where we've disclosed where the funding is coming from, and it's not coming from there. As far as the look and feel, as far as it looking more rural, I think we can take a look at that and see if there's some ways that we can improve that. And maybe look at that, but yeah, yeah. And I do think some good elements. The maintenance portion is really important to us. We do have limited maintenance funding. And so we want to make sure that we are building something that we'll be able to maintain fairly easily. And so that's critical, too. So I think we should look at that. And any other thoughts, comments? Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, considering the fact that the property that more or less abuts is an equestrian facility, it does make sense for us to find a place that would be a little less impactful to the neighbors. I like that idea, I hadn't thought about it. Now, this isn't intended to be an equestrian park like the one over in Sunshine Ranches, but obviously it's open to horses. People ride horses in there now. But I think we need to protect them as well.
Yeah, we can take a look at that. Good point. Good. So as always, we appreciate the feedback from the public. We always learn something there, give us some new ideas. So we'll take that and kind of see how we can adjust.
Yeah, just a couple of comments. Would we want to, A, keep the building there and build a wall to shield the?
Yeah, I mean, I think that's what we need to look at and see what.
The options are, because I think closer to the road is not in our best interest.
Yeah.
And, you know, there's other, there's other ways we can make it rustic, too. Instead of the tongue and groove, we can use T-111. That stains very easily, screws in, and it's cheap. Comparatively speaking, to tongue and groove pine or cedar or, I've used it in a building restaurants.
Right.
And it gives you that rustic feel, the way it's made. But need to consider maybe possibly putting in a privacy wall between the building and the property owner, you know, too there. You know, one thing we can't do is we can't spend any of this other than the driveway in the 5 acres.
Right, right.
That's where we, that's where people don't realize that. And we can't put the building up close to Griffin Road because we have a wetlands issue up there.
Yeah.
And then it's very, you know, it's very difficult for the site selection, and that seems to be the most optimal place, right there, in my opinion.
Yeah, I mean, I think.
What we need to do to make it work?
Right.
It might be, you know, other considerations.
Right. I mean, I think it's worth taking a look to see what other options, if there are other options available. And let's, you know.
Yeah, now's the time, now's the time where, there's an old expression when we were building, and Bob knows it. Paper is patient.
Yeah.
You can try different things on paper all day long.
Yeah.
You know, before the shovel hits the ground, so.
Right.
I think we need to be, I think we're in that phase right now.
Good. All right, awesome. Thank you all for coming out. We really appreciate you bringing us up to date on where we are and the opportunity to provide some feedback on it. So we'll continue to look at it. Thank you.
Mayor, if I could say something?
Yes.
Yeah, I just want to, first of all, thank the CPZ team. They've worked very closely with town staff. I want to thank and recognize Emily Rod and December for their efforts on this. We heard the feedback tonight. We will certainly take that into consideration and try to work with the CPZ group to, you know, address some of the concerns that were raised by the members of the public and the council as well. So we'll come back with something.
Awesome, thank you. All right, very good. Next item is public comment. I do want to make a couple of comments before we open up to public comment. Just, first one is I do want to make a correction. I see these signs that are on the wall, no video recording. Actually, that is not a proper policy. I'm going to ask that those signs be taken down. And so that will be, you are allowed to video. I was not under, I did not know that last time we met. But I am, was, after the meeting, was informed of that. And so you're welcome to record. All the meetings are recorded anyway, but you're welcome to do that. And we'll keep it where it is and move forward that way. So I think with that, let's go ahead with public comment.
Mayor, I have five that have signed up for public comment tonight.
Great, thank you.
Jim Lasky, you're first, followed by John Garotti.
I was told, and correct me if I'm wrong, that this damn incinerator that we're about to get, or could possibly get, or we're scared of getting, is serious, and very serious to this town, and I can't see how it isn't. You're worried about the monarch butterfly, and what happens if he gets smoked out? I mean, really? All right, we're worried about every living thing theoretically that could be affected by the fallout from that incinerator. It's stupid, there's no reason for it. Now, all of a sudden, it seems that waste management is adding robotics and some other optical sorting equipment to what originally was going to be, what originally wasn't going to be installed and now is going to be installed, or at least it's mentioned, okay, in their project they're going to do on 27. But what is that, three years from now? But the fact is, we got those guys coming to the table. Richard out in California has talked to another company that's doing the same thing already. And usually in business, when you find out there's such a big addressable market with so many opportunities here that they're going to build three incinerators, you're talking about a billion and a half each? Well, private business comes in and says, hey, we can do that. And if you look at copper and aluminum that have gone up so much in the last month alone, copper is up 25% now, and aluminum is up about 28%. So suddenly, the commodities, you know, are getting scarce because everybody's building, and they're expanding the grid, they don't have enough grid capacity right now. You've got a huge market, they're going to be fighting over this garbage soon. So that should have already been taken care of itself. But we still need to keep the pressure on because this, Dade County is really insistent on doing that incinerator. So how many of you all are going to be going to Miramar tomorrow night to protest? Anybody? Mr. Hartman?
Wasn't aware of anything tomorrow?
Well, tomorrow night, you know, they're asking people to show up, and we've got tickets to speak and everything else, but we could support these guys. You know, Dade County, we already addressed them in person about this problem a year ago. And they haven't done a damn thing but keep thinking incinerator. And like I said, we all ought to stick together, and it'd be a hell of a lot easier to fight this now in this stage of the game than it would be to wait any longer. And then Mr. Sorty, when he comes into the executive committee, can already have some models of what his job could focus on and make it a lot easier.
Great, thank you.
Anyway.
Russell, can you reach out to Jim and get us the information for tomorrow night?
Certainly.
Thank you.
I'm going to leave it to where it is. All right, John Garotti, 162nd Avenue. I like this. Hi, Laura. And my wife always watches me, so I'm kind of famous now. Couple of things I wanted to touch in my three minutes. I got to do it. I'm sorry, sorry, Gary. There we go. Hi, Laura. All right, here we go. So a couple of things I wanted to address. I took a small field trip with Richard Rem Charitar. We went to the dump, believe it or not. Not many folks go to the dump. But you know it's shocking what you see at that dump. You could probably remodel your house with the things that get thrown away. We have a huge issue with sorting there. You bring in whatever you want. We actually shot a quick video. It's impressive what you see out there. And when you go to the landfill, you can actually see the end result of what we're trying to do with recycling and all the other measures to get to that zero-waste challenge. But that was very interesting. Richard was, had an eye-opener with that one because, I think he's here, there he goes. Good job on the San Francisco trip. I know you came back full of information, and that's always appreciated. I got a minute 58, I'm doing well. The, here's where I'm going to switch lanes. We, as a town, have a lot of little loose ends here, but here it goes. As a candidate for council seat in District 3, I'm addressing a serious breach of the Florida sunshine law at our last town hall meeting. Steve, thank you very much for showing up last night to our brief little event. And, you know, you were the only one that showed up. It was last minute, I do understand that. And it was refreshing to see somebody actually come out and, you know, speak to us. But we rolled out the red carpet because we thought Keith was going to show up because we had an email. There was a red carpet, but that didn't happen. But going back to that, to address this breach, that the sunshine law is, what is it for? It's to protect you guys and protect us and gather information and spread information properly and not cross lines, right? This law is essential for maintaining public trust by ensuring transparency and accessibility in government decisions. To address this breach, I propose a thorough investigation to identify the causes and hopefully rectify the issue with full cooperation from all involved, implementing training and technology to prevent future violations. Establishing a citizen oversight committee, that wouldn't be a bad idea to monitor compliance and maintain transparency. Keeps everybody in check a little bit. I also express disappointment, and this isn't personal because I know everybody's in business and to defend the town, but I'm disappointed in our town attorney. We got Michael Jordan over here. I mean, I would have figured that that would have put a stop to that, but you know what? We all don't win the game every single time. And it's not a personal thing, it's not an attack, but I got to say what's on my mind, that's just the type of person I am. He didn't provide earlier advice and guidance that could have prevented this breach. Together, let's reaffirm our commitment to the principles of democracy, ensuring our government remains transparent, accountable, and reflective of our community values. Thank you.
Thank you.
I made it.
Melissa Erdely, followed by Mary Michelle, followed by Mohammed Kaki.
Hi, I'm Melissa Erdely, 58th Street. Some of you might know me as Smack Smith.
Can you pull the mic down?
My question basically is not even a town question. It's just, I can't get an answer. It's for Davy. Are they allowed to answer any questions?
No.
I just want to know if they have body-worn cameras? And if they do, is there a policy? And since when did you get them? Do you guys not have anyone from the PD that answers questions?
We can't hear you.
If you ask your question, then we'll see if they are able to answer at the end.
Davy PD, do they wear body-worn cameras? If so, when did they start wearing them? And do they have a policy? And how would I get a copy of it? And I've tried calling the PD myself, but I just can't get through.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Mayor?
Yeah. No. So the way it works is you can present your questions, right? And we'll go through public comment. At the end, if we can answer it, we will answer it. If not, we'll go back and we'll research it, we'll get you the answer.
Okay, so right now, what you're saying is no answer?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Mary Michelle.
Mary Michelle, 15011 North Saxon. I call again for this town to rescind its support of Israel resolution and in its place, call for a resolution for a permanent ceasefire and equitable peace negotiations. As a wide swath of our town seems to have collective amnesia, I thought it might be a good time to remind you of the actual facts. This war did not begin on October 7th. The history of the region was altered significantly with the signing of the Balfour Agreement in 1917. It got a whole lot worse in 1948 and has continued to deteriorate due to Israeli aggression and illegal occupation of Palestinian lands. Israel wasn't just a small strip of barren land in 1948. The creation of the State of Israel violently uprooted and displaced 120,000 Palestinians from their ancestral homes and rightful inheritance. About 15,000 Palestinians were killed in a series of mass atrocities, including dozens of massacres. It was violent, it was ugly, it was brutal, and it never stopped. For 78 years, Palestinians have suffered under the occupation while Israel violates every aspect of international law and human rights while continuing to stale their land. Israel's current aggression is nothing new. In 1948, Prime Minister David Ben-Gurin stated, "We must use terror, assassination, and intimidation. We must stale their land and eliminate every social service to free Israel from its average population." There was no breaking of the ceasefire by Hamas on October 7th. There was no ceasefire in place, at least on the Israeli side. 2023 was the deadliest year on record for the number of murders of Palestinians by the Israeli government in the West Bank, and Israel had openly fired on peaceful protesters in Gaza as well as restricting their access to medical care. There has not been an election in Gaza since 2006. No one under the age of 36 has ever been allowed to vote in Gaza. More than half the population are children. Hamas was propped up, supported, and funded by the Israeli government. The people of Gaza have been under blockade for 18 years in what is known as an open-air prison. Now they are being killed like fish in a barrel. This is not a war, it is slaughter, plain and simple. The Palestinians do not have tanks, warplanes, or an iron dome. Tens of thousands of civilians have already been slaughtered. The actual number is unknown since many are still buried under the rubble or have been vaporized by the intensity of the bombs. The murder of innocent civilians is not just the consequence of war, which has been so glibly stated and bantered about. The first rule of engagement in battle is to protect civilian life, not to indiscriminately murder and say, oops. The idea that Israel is our strongest ally is pure propaganda. Netanyahu has openly ridiculed how he knows how he controlled the United States and has stated, "Once we squeeze all that we can out of the United States, it can dry up and blow away." That is some ally. It is ludicrous to say that Israel is the only democracy in the Middle East.
Thank you.
Mohammed Kaki, followed by Marion Allen, followed by final speaker is Debbie Green.
Mohammed Kaki, 10957 Bow Harbor. I stand before you today because I plead that instead of passing resolutions where we emphasize our support, where we stand for Israel, I plead for you today instead to call for ceasefire, a permanent ceasefire. I'm a Palestinian-American medical student on the brink of realizing my dream of becoming a physician. In a moment where I feel like I should be overjoyed and feeling accomplished, my heart weighs heavy with sorrow and grief instead. Because while I prepare to cross the graduation stage, the reality for my fellow Gazza medical students is one of a gleaming doom. Can you fathom their realities? The Islamic University of Gaza and Al-Ashar University, two of Gaza's largest medical schools, were intentionally targeted and bombed into oblivion. Could you imagine your own university, the place where we find lifelong friendships, learn eternal lessons, and create some of our favorite memories, simply disappearing overnight without anyone able to hold the perpetrators accountable? Some of you know the story of Hind Rajab, a six-year-old Palestinian child who pleaded for help while trapped in a car for hours, surrounded by her six murdered relatives, including her older teenage sister. Her terror-stricken voice was played across cellphones all across the globe. While people around the world demanded for her rescue, Zionist forces eventually killed her, too. Several hours following the attack that killed her relatives, the Palestinian Red Crescent managed to coordinate a safe passage with the Israeli offensive forces, authorities, to establish a route for paramedics to go save her. On her app to her rescue, the ambulance was intentionally bombed, and the two paramedics, Youssef al-Zaino and Ahmed al-Madoun, were killed. Hind's body was found 12 days later. Not only are instances like these blatant violations of international law, but they are also crimes against humanity that contribute to Zionism's goal of ethnic cleansing and an ongoing genocide of the Palestinian people. These are crimes that should send shivers down the spines of healthcare workers across the globe, but instead, the Western medical community has responded with a coldness that provides a double standard of racism. As I share these words and stories with you, it is important to note that only 10 of 36 hospitals in Gaza are partially functioning. Even that functionality is well beyond the standards that we as healthcare workers today would accept for our patients in the Western world. As the healthcare crisis in Gaza becomes more dire, Israeli occupation forces continue to target hospitals and ambulances, kidnap, torture, and target healthcare staff and their families. All this while the United States senselessly cuts funding to UNRWA and continues to provide murderous military aid. While we hear leaders talk across the world about peace, we cannot let them make this concept hollow for us. Peace is not peace without justice, and justice cannot begin until there is a permanent and immediate ceasefire, an end to the siege on Gaza and an end to the occupation of an apartheid from the Jordan River to the sea. Thank you.
Marion Allen, followed by Debbie Green.
While I was hoping I wasn't having to speak on this subject because we have so many important things to do with our town, what the heck do we have to do with Middle East conflict? If they want to make a difference, go to Washington where policy is made. We can't make policy here. But anyway, let's get some facts straight. October 7th was the worst genocide against Jews. Let's keep that fact in our mind. Children tortured, babies butchered, and now the perpet- Children tortured, babies butchered, and now the perpetrators are acting the victim. They declared war. Hamas declared war on Israel October 7th. Israel is defending itself against mass murderers and genocidal maniacs. And now, because they're losing, oh my God, let's have a ceasefire. What does a ceasefire accomplish for Israel? It gives the enemy a chance to rearm from Iran, which is funding Hezbollah, ISIS, Hamas, and other groups. I just listen to all this brainwashing nonsense when you have the facts in front of you if you just look at the news and what happened October 7th. Having declared war, the Hamas people, the Palestinian Charter says, "Israel must be annihilated to every man, woman, and child." So if you're proposing genocide against the Israeli people, well, you got, you're, you're gonna get what's coming to you. These people are defending their lives, they're defending their children, and they have a right to be there? Okay, this is the ancestral land of the Israelis. And for these people to come up here and bring little stories of this and little stories of that, why don't you listen to what happened to those children and women and men October 7th? And by the way, where are the hostages? These were innocent people, they're not soldiers that were taken. This is against war, this is war crimes, taking innocent people as hostages, keeping them more than six months underground. And guess what? They couldn't stop themselves. They had to torture them and kill most of them, okay? So there are no hostages hardly left to trade anymore. So before these people come with their moral superiority here, we have a right to support Israel, to defend itself against monsters. Thank you.
Debbie? Sorry, I didn't see Debbie.
Debbie Green, 5201 Southwest 199. I'm, I'm gonna ask you to forgive me, I'm gonna repeat what I said last time only because public comment wasn't shared, so I just think it's important to bring back out, just because I had such a big outcry after the, two meetings ago, when the topic was brought up about the Bergeron entities asking for an exception to allow them to get their water at their property that's out here off of US 27 and Griffin out here. They're asking for the exception to get their water from Pembroke Pines as opposed to getting their water from Sunrise, which is the major, the provider of water throughout the town. I heard some, from reputable sources and different people, I'm like, I got several calls after that meeting, that, that Bergerons are looking possibly to put on that site a, an incinerator or, well, on our property, there can't be an incinerator because it doesn't, our use doesn't allow for it. But there could be possibly maybe a recycling center or the, whatever those other things are that go along with an incinerator. He also has the property just down the road in Pembroke Pines, which I also heard, don't know if it's true, that's why I'm putting it out there, because I know y'all can't talk until you are at a meeting together. There was also, I heard that the Bergerons weighed very heavily in Angelo Castillo's campaign and that, that he's been kind of trying to, having private conversations, backdoor conversations, in allowing for the site to be allowed to be used as an incinerator and the pines property. So I just want to make sure that we look through, everybody does their research, the town does their research before this exception is made, because maybe it is one of those things where if he has his, all the infrastructure to get water from pines, it saves him the million or whatever it is that he would save getting water from there as opposed to having to get it from Sunrise, and he has that money to build whatever it is, whether it's to feed into an incinerator or whatever that process is.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. Is that, great. Public comment is closed. Board reports. Can we have any board reports this evening? Seeing none, council member comments?
Hey, I'll go, I'll lead off.
Thank you.
Just a few things, make a couple of announcements. Let's see, we have hazmat at the barn on the 27th of this month, starting at 8 o'clock in the morning, and we have shredding and prescription drug drop off. I'll get that right this time, not pickup. That's on the 27th, which Saturday, at the barn in Rolling Oaks. Oh, we have bingo at the barn on the 11th of May. It's $25 a ticket, which includes dinner, which starts at 6:00 PM. December, where can they buy the tickets at?
Here at Town Hall in about two weeks.
Okay, here at Town Hall, good. And the Flowmobile is still currently on hold for a while, and hopefully that'll get freed up later on in the year. I want to talk about a couple of sensitive things that are really troublesome and serious. Both of them deal with social media. Okay, the first one is I'm getting calls, requests, knock on my door, whatever, down the street. Apparently, dealing with the candidates that are running for office and possible criminal history or credit problems or bankruptcies or assault charges or whatever. And I'd like to ask Keith if he could use his resources to research the candidates, including us. And I'll be the first one. I got no problem seeing somebody looking into my background. Am I squeaky clean? No, I got a traffic ticket about 30 years ago, so. But I get people asking me that in Rolling Oaks, they want to know, and outside of Rolling Oaks, you know, what is this all about? Apparently, it's been mentioned on social media, and they want to know more about the candidates, so. And if there's any candidates out there that have a problem with this, then they shouldn't be running, you know, putting it mildly. That's item one. Item two, we have posts that my neighbors read to me, since I don't deal with the social media side of it, where basically the entire council here is corrupt. Now, you can call me old, you can call me fat, you can call me stupid, you can call me ugly. It's sticks and stones, they just bounce off. But corrupt, that's, that's, that's totally something different. And I take offense to that, and I take it very seriously. And I'd like to, to know, well, I'd like, I'd like to pursue legal angle on that, because I think that is totally incorrect and it besmirches our integrity, our honesty, and everything we do up here. And Keith, what, what, do you have any suggestions on what could be done for that?
I mean, like anything else, we could protect the council's interests through filing a cause of action for defamation. It's commonly done. It was done with Trump and others very recently. It's, you know, something that unfortunately is occurring way too often in social media, where people are hiding behind their computer and lobbying accusations at individuals, and they think they can hide behind their keyboard. The law is clear that unless they, you know, have direct proof that you are corrupt, that that terminology, lobbying it against an entire council and town council, is a violation of law, and it will be proven to be a violation of law. So absolutely, you could pursue any legal option you want. I've told the council numerous times that when it comes to defamation, it's such a serious issue that can impugn an entire council and myself, that I'm always happy to do that on my own cost, you know, without cost to the town, just, you know, filing fees would be the town's indirect cost, but I wouldn't charge legal fees for pursuing such remedy anytime if the council desired that to protect itself from defamatory statements.
Thank you, Keith. Yeah, I'm, you know, I'm willing to, I want to pursue this. I think it's, it's time to, you know, put, put our foot down, whatever, it's false information being put out there, you know, and I'm gonna go so far as to make a motion to move forward with this. If I could get a second, I would really appreciate it.
I, I personally would like to think this over for some time, consider it. I would not want to make a decision tonight on it. I hear, believe me, I hear exactly what you're saying, you know? I, I am, I am...
People aren't happy with the decision we make, so automatically we're corrupt.
I know, I know.
It's ridiculous.
It is ridiculous.
I mean, these people have like, no brains.
It's beyond ridiculous. It's, ridiculous is saying something stupid. This is, this is as a weapon targeted at us. And, and so I, I get, I, I totally understand what you're saying, I get it. Is it, I, I, what, what I need, what I'm thinking about is, will this escalation solve the issue or will it just create a higher level of issue? And that's, that's what I, that's what I personally, I'm not, you know, I'm not the final vote here, but I personally, that's what I want to think about and come to a conclusion about.
Mayor, if I could? I'm gonna sit here and tell every single one of you out there, when you question my integrity, all right, you piss me off. When I give you my word, when I say something, it is. My commitment to this town is above and beyond what anybody would ever imagine, all right? I came out here, bought my property when I come back from Vietnam, built my house myself, and I live here. If you think for one second that my belief or my backdoor dealings or so would do anything to harm this town, then you are absolutely out of your mind, all right? You may think it's free speech, but I call it my integrity being questioned. So I will second that motion from Gary, because I am sick and tired of all the misconception that's out there. If you don't have the nerve to pick up the phone and give me a call and ask me a question, then I've got no respect for you. I'm there 24/7. Come by the house, you know where I live. Sit down and we'll talk about it. But don't go behind my back and start with all these accusations and stuff that are going on. I am tired of it myself. So I will second that motion, Gary, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Let me just make a quick comment on this.
Sure, please.
It's pathetic. We have people questioning our integrity, and they're supporting two criminals running for office, two convicted felons. I defy anybody to go out to FDLE, and if you think I'm corrupt, tell them why you think I'm corrupt. Let them come after me. We live modest means, we have nothing to hide. Next two months from now, we're gonna have to publish our financial backgrounds. Knock yourself out. Call FDLE, see if it gets you anywhere. I can say for myself, and I feel the same way about everybody I serve with, there isn't a person up here who's corrupt. They all operate with integrity. Talk about some of the older council members, prior council members, we had some problems there. One of them, every time he put his hand up and brought something up, it was, what's in it for him? I don't feel that way about anybody I serve with right now, and I can tell you, I'm not corrupt. Mark my words. This keeps up, I'm all for this, because it's wrong. Thank you. Thank you, Bob. David?
Steve, I'm inclined with agreeing with you about thinking about it, but if we're forced to vote, we're forced to vote, but when I decided to run, I didn't take it lightly. And I, I evaluated my whole life up till the point I said, yeah, I'm gonna run. We were at the Parkers, I was at the Parkers, where that decision was made. And as Bob said, call FDLE, Amy, go ahead. You have a problem with me? Nobody has called me to question my ethics. Not one person. You haven't called me. Have not called me.
Quiet. No, you are not, this is not your time to speak.
Nobody has called me, all right? And I welcome that phone call. And, you know, I got a clean record. I'm not corrupt, I don't take any kickbacks, I don't, I look at this as public service, and that's what I wanted to get into. I studied political science, Florida State University. I studied public service when I was at Nova Southeastern Law School. I'm an attorney, I, I have no selfish interest to do anything except serve the town where I live, because I want to keep it rural.
At the end of the day, we're your neighbors, just like everybody else. We're your neighbors. I moved out here in 1995 with three young daughters, because I wanted them to live in a rural environment, and it helped form who they were, it helps form who they are today, and they are now raising their families in various parts of the country. I joined this, I, I ran for this council because I wanted to give back and protect and preserve those things that drew me to this town. It wasn't even a town at the time, it was unincorporated Broward County, but it drew me to this part of Broward County almost 30 years ago, because I think it's so important that we pass it on to the next generation. And for somebody to come and start hurling accusations that I'm up here for, and I'm corrupt? It's unbelievable. It's unbelievable.
Dirty politics.
It's, it's worse than dirty politics.
That's ridiculous.
It's, it's a shame that we got to this point. It's a shame that this individual and those that are around her did not say, listen, we know these people, they're our neighbors, we understand that sometimes we have differing opinions, and we don't always get things the way, but they're doing what they're trying to do. Everybody that's up here is trying to do the best and the right thing for this town. And these types of comments, and we, one thing, if it was, if it was a single comment, but this goes on and on and on and on, post after post after post. And what's, where's, and where is the, the evidence to stand behind it? It's never there, because there is none.
That's why I brought it all up.
It's, it's a very valid point.
There's nothing behind it, it's just words that are coming out that are, that are harmful.
Yeah.
And it really impinges upon our integrity.
And, and it impinges upon the, the integrity of this town. Somebody else from outside this town reads those posts, and they start to think that this town is corrupt. They think that the ranches is corrupt, because they read those posts. It's bigger than just us. Listen, when I signed up for this job, when I signed up for this job, I knew I was gonna be insulted, I knew I was gonna be, you know, have, have days when people were gonna be yelling at me for one reason or another. But this goes beyond that, and this, we live in a beautiful town. We live in an amazing place. We live in a place that the vast majority of South Florida would love to live in this town. It's that amazing. And to have these kind of insults that are just made up or false, completely false, thrown out there, it, it, it throws dirt on this whole town, so.
That's why I brought it up, and that's why I think we need to pursue legal means, because I don't, I don't see any other remedy. Being nice isn't working.
Being nice is definitely not working.
You know.
Mayor, I'm gonna reiterate one thing. Pick up the telephone, call me. Don't email me, don't send out emails and stuff, give me a phone call. Come to the house, give me a call, all right? And we can sit in person and talk about it. Talking on email, talking through social media, doesn't get anywhere. Come to my house, sit down at my table, and we'll talk about it, and we'll get it worked out. You may not like the answer that I give you, but it will be the best answer that's right for this town, I promise you that, all right? We may not see eye to eye every time, but I guarantee you, this town is first in my heart.
I think we should call the question.
We have a motion and a second on the floor.
Is there a public comment?
What's that?
Would there be a public comment if we're taking a vote?
Yeah, we can do public comment. Thank you, David. Is there any public comment on this item? Jeff? Jeff, would you like the?
I can bring you the mic. Jeffrey Cohen, Southwest Ranches. As a retired attorney, may I give you some legal advice? As elected officials, you are public figures. For better or not, you must accept these anonymous allegations. There's nothing to be accomplished by filing a lawsuit. It's exceedingly difficult to prevail as public figures in a defamation action, and by doing so, you run the risk of being accused of violating individuals' First Amendment rights. Think carefully about filing an action. I would strongly... I would strongly urge you not to. Uh, if, I would encourage you to refer any such inquiries to law enforcement. But there's nothing to be accomplished and much to be lost by filing a defamation action as a public figure. Your, 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 your standard of proof is extremely high, and it's unlikely you're gonna be able to prevail. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff.
I, I'm just gonna say that when they said that they had a meeting the other night, and it was, uh, the red carpet was rolled out, all I know is, I wanted to go. I was gonna, wanted to go, but it was, I'm slammed at work right now, didn't make it there. But in reading all the comments, in the welcome to go and the red carpet out, it was like, we're even welcoming the moles, the little moles from town. So I was questioning, I guess, am I a little mole? So I don't know that that's really rolling out the red carpet, and you really want to hear from everybody, and you were disappointed that you didn't get more people to, to, because I wanted to be there, because what's important to me is what's in the best interest of the town. I believe that's the same of all of you. Um, but I also kind of, um, agree with, what the judge had to say.
I'm not gonna say this to all of you, I'm gonna say it to the other candidates. My father taught me, and I come from a long line of politicians, two governors, um, US Senator. My father taught me, if I couldn't run on my own merit and had to run on somebody else's weaknesses, I didn't belong in the race. My father also taught me to respect those who came ahead of you. And then I'm reminded of, Macbeth says something that I like to quote. When somebody says a bunch of stuff that isn't true about a group of people, and I can assure you, I'm not doing that about any of you. But there's a line in Macbeth, and it says, "Methinks she doth protest too much." Thank you.
Marianne Allen, I've been here over 30 years, and I've seen many councils, and I've seen many things done. And I know what you were talking about prior councils, where we were literally shut up when we got up to public speak, if they didn't like what we were going to say. And I've been to some of those meetings, where they said that to me, because they didn't want stuff to come out that was going on, true stuff. This council here works well together, and I have to say, every issue I've brought up here, there was full public clarity and honesty and sunshine. You remember some of the things that happened with the permitting, et cetera, et cetera? You let me sit up here for an hour, and we went over all the details. And this is the first council that's ever done that, that has allowed public opinion, and you've asked us for, for all our, um, any of our concerns that we had, you put aside, okay? Um, let me tell you something about integrity, and I've always remembered this. Integrity is the only thing that you give yourself, that no one can take away. Thank you.
Thank you, Marianne.
Good evening. John Garrati, 162nd Avenue. Um, I was at that gathering, when I, when I want to clarify to Ms. Green, is when I meant the red carpet, Keith sent an email that said he was showing up. I didn't expect that. I didn't expect Steve to show up. Um, it's, we, the email was sent to all of you guys. I was shocked. What I, I always kid around, you know, the red carpet, we didn't have a red carpet, Debbie, that was a joke, but we were happy to have Mr. Polyakov show up, but that didn't happen. Steve, the mayor, showed up. Um, I'm so glad I am not on social media. I never have been, my businesses have though. I don't like social media, I think it's stupid, but what are you gonna do? It's the modern way of communication. My wife's on social media. She's not the happiest person sometimes, she just write, had to, she just had to write a check for $24,000 to the town. But that is what it is, that's old news. But, um, when it comes to, you know, freedom of speech, I actually agree with Mr. Cohen. That's kind of shocking for me, but you know what? He made a valid point. Don't waste any more town attorney time and budgeting for this. We have to just come together as a town. I know that sitting up there is a big deal. Sitting in his shoes in courtrooms is a big deal. It's not an easy job. And if I ever get to make it, right? I'm a fair person, I don't nitpick, I don't, you, you guys have called me out on a few things sometimes. I, you know, I am who I am, but I don't know who you guys are addressing with, um, convicted felons. That's not me, I'll put that super clear. My rights have never had to be restored. I've never had to expel or expunge or seal or any of that. I've never had a firearm rights taken away from me. I don't own any firearms. I've never had that, and you guys can look it up. I do speed, tell you that. I, um, used to drive to auctions three times a week, and I had to make it to Orlando in two and a half hours, so... Yeah, I'm 49, I had some speeding tickets, but they made me a safe driver again, funny or not, but... I, you know, there's a lot of rhetoric, and there's a lot of commentary. I too am the type, I got attacked when I launched my campaign, so I will end it with that. So Jim, you started it, I didn't, but I ended it, so thank you, guys.
Am I allowed to speak, since I'm the one you're talking about?
Yes, yes, yes.
So for those of you that don't know...
Speak into the mic, please.
I also wanted to get it. So the, this dais right here is talking about me. And I just want to bring up one thing, is that when the last election was here, all of you promised me that you were going to help fix code enforcement. Instead, you allowed Mr. Polyakov to allow code enforcement to, um, wrongfully write me notices of violation. You allowed him to side with the neighbors. You have now allowed Mr. Polyakov to insert himself into a legal issue that I have with my neighbor. He went as far as to try to get a gag order on me. I have been accused of being Trump-esque, last night, I mean tonight, and in the, um, the court order. The court denied that gag order, saying that it's unconstitutional. You guys are worried about the C-word up here? I can assure you, there are other C-words that some of us have been called, and we're not going to sue anybody. You have to deal with what I have to say about you now. Because Mr. Hartman, the last time I reached out to you, your response was to me, why are you asking me? Mr. Albrighton, you spoke to my husband the other day, literally after you had a sidebar with Mr. Jablonsky, Mr. Polyakov, and my neighbor. Okay? Right now, the only person, Mr. Kozinski, you told me that you needed me to back you after you saw what I did for Mr. Hartman. And then when I email you, not a single one of you will respond to me. I told you what Mr. Polyakov was doing with his little buddy, Mr. Medina, and none of you care. If you don't care about me, then you don't care about them. So if you're gonna sit up here and care about yourselves, we see that, understand that. The only problem that I've not had an issue with is you yet. Funny, right? Oh, wait, 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 one more thing. I have, one question. You have to have an answer to this. The legal litigation that you've gone through with the inserting yourself into my neighbor's lawsuit, how much did that cost? Or you do that for free too? Is it just fun for you at this point?
Time is up, thank you.
I have four seconds. Oh, it's my past, that's all.
Any other public comment? Seeing none. You know, I, I just gotta say, for me personally, I see this as an escalation that's not gonna lead to any, any, any resolution here. I think it's just gonna create, create more issues, create more strife. Um, I think what's going on is absolutely wrong. But, um, I think what Jeff said, it rings true to me. And so I personally am gonna vote no on this.
Steve?
Me too.
Gary, uh, Mr. Cohen, thank you for your advice, okay? Uh, I know you're a longtime attorney. I appreciate your input on that, and I sit here and waited, uh, very, you know... So, uh, Gary, I would withdraw my second for that. Uh, let's see what happens with this. But like I said before, if you have the nerve, pick up the phone, alright? John, don't understand what your problem is. Uh, yeah, you. John, you and I had a talk about that.
No back and forth, no back and forth.
But anyhow, we had a talk about that man to man, and, uh, I, uh, explained the situation, thought everything was clear, but apparently, you know, we may not agree on everything, but like I said, whatever's done is right for the town. If you have a problem, come talk to me, and we'll get it worked out. But Gary, I'd like to withdraw my second on that, and, uh, let's see where this goes from here.
Okay.
Jerry, I, I appreciate where you brought it, where you're bringing it from, I just...
I understand.
Yeah.
Um, Keith, can you, um, research the topic a little bit, uh, regarding what, uh, Jeff said, and...
Yeah, I, I can draft a, I mean, what you've requested in the past, a memo on the current state of the law. The law has changed in the last year on this topic, especially with social media and several of the Trump cases. So if you'd like that, I could do a brief memo to the council, and you can revisit this item in two weeks.
Good. Thank you.
Okay.
You...
Done, done.
You're done, okay. Who would like to go next on council comments?
Mayor, I'll go real quick.
Thank you, Jim.
I got one thing to talk about real quick. Um, like I said, I sit on the Broward League of Cities Board of Directors, and it was brought to my attention here the other day, that one of our citizens, right here in town, had a problem. Now, the problem didn't deal here in the state or in Broward County, but it could very well affect any resident here in the state, or in Broward County. They own a piece of property, and the next thing they know, they got a packet in the mail where the property had been sold. Everything was done. And they had no clue that this was happening. This could happen right here. You know that Marty Cure has been here many a time, and said that we have a way to let people know if somebody steals your property or tries to steal your property. But again, that is after the fact. I spoke to Marty Cure's office. After the deed has been transferred, they will notify you that the deed was transferred. That could cost you a bunch of money trying to get your property back. The people that stole this person's property, like I said, it's out of state, had driver's license made up in their name with their driver's license number. They had their social security numbers. They had all the information they wanted about them, but with their pictures on these IDs, the people that were doing the deed and all the work had no idea that these were two fake people. Property was listed at $250,000. There were a few minor stipulations that needed to be met. Three out of the four got met, the other one didn't. So the people said, look, if you will go through with that fourth stipulation, we'll drop the price to $150,000 instead of $250,000, and they jumped all over it. Somebody wrote a check to two crooks for $150,000. It can happen right here. In fact, it happened out in Country Estates there, where they took a deceased man's property or tried to take it from him. I'm asking our state legislator, I spoke to her already, Ms. Robin Bartman, I'm gonna meet with Marty Cure and see if we can't tweak our state law. Our state law says they have to take that deed. They have to. I'm gonna see if it can't be, before they accept that, the person that last paid taxes, last paid the taxes on the property is notified. The crook's not paying the taxes on that property, you are. So the last person who pays taxes gets notified before that deed gets transferred. Save you some money, because even here, like I said, in Broward County, if that happens, you gotta go through legal process to get it back. So I'm working with our state representative, I'll be working with Marty, and I'll keep you informed. I mentioned this at the Broward League of Cities, and I had five or six mayors and councilmen come up and say that that was a great idea, so we may have the backing with the Broward League of City also. But protect our residents out here. You would not know your property's gone until you did not get a tax notice the next year. And then it's too late. So that's what I'm working on, thank you.
All right. Um, thank you, the folks that are here. Um, David Kozinski, District Four. Uh, first, looking forward to our new speed signs that are gonna be going up soon. There was a delay, Mr. Morris was on vacation, and he, uh, got in a delay there, so... But they'll be going up soon, and, um, the signs will show how fast you're going, and they'll flash if you're exceeding our 25 mile an hour speed limit, except for rolling oats. And in addition, I'm, I'm very interested in this protest thing that's going on tomorrow night, I heard it's tomorrow night, for the incinerator. I was first person that wrote about the incinerator, and absolutely opposed to it. I've worked with Debbie out at the farmer's market handing papers out. So I'm, um, very, very much opposed to this. Um, I spoke to Russell, um, a couple of weeks ago, and with an idea for a fundraiser for the Ed Board, and I'm still, um, interested in pursuing this. I'd like to, um, do like a Texas Hold'em thing, do it out at the barn. I think it would be really, really, really cool. Uh, Texas Hold'em, uh, for a fundraiser for the Ed Board, I think it'd be very cool. Um, and then I'm gonna wrap it up with my monthly law and order report. From March, traffic citations in the town. I'm gonna begin in District One. Uh, 14 citations were issued during the month of March. Two were speeding, and all of those on exterior roads. District Two, eight citations were written during the month of March. Six were speeding, three of those, half of those on internal roads. Uh, District Three, 29 citations, uh, were issued. 11 of those 29 were for speeding, and, uh, five of those were on internal roads. And then District Four, because District Four always has the most. Uh, 74 citations written during the month of March. That's more than every district combined. 62 speeding, more than every district combined. Six of those citations on internal roads. I want to thank Davy Police for enforcing the speed limit. It means a lot. Um, it means a lot to our animals that are running loose in the town, whether it be a raccoon, a possum, a duck. A, it, people, I've seen these animals run over, it breaks my heart. It doesn't matter if it's a duck or a possum, breaks my heart, because the animal was doing nothing. Just somebody carelessly speeding, not paying attention. That wraps up my report.
Thank you, David. Bob?
Yeah, just have a couple of things. Um, the statistics David just read out on, on tickets that are being written in town is, uh... Just to let everybody know, it's kind of the sum total of work we've been doing now for probably six months or so. We realized that we didn't really like the ticket statistics. Not that anybody likes tickets, but when people are zooming up and down our, our side streets, what do you do about it? Well, you know, what we did was, we asked Davy to not be writing their reports down by Lowe's. You know the spot. Not be writing their reports sitting out here in the middle of Griffin Road. You know the spot. There's a couple of Mountain Country Estates. They also like to sit, used to like to sit and write their reports over at a couple of the different parks. Now, it's good that they're there, because there's some presence. But what we really needed them to do was to start doing that, sitting on the corner in the middle of Sunshine Ranches. Sitting, you know, down one of the streets, that's one of the speeding streets in Country Estates. And really, what that's done is it's driven up the numbers. It's really easy to sit out at Masters Academy and write tickets all day long for the people speeding up and down Griffin Road. But if there's a road that can take it in town, it's probably Griffin Road. Not, you know, Lorre Road, not Hollaty over in Sunshine Ranches, not 185th out in Country Estates. Those are not good roads to speed on, because they're right in people's front yards, and to David's point, we got kids out, we got critters out, and it's all wild animals as well, and nothing bothers me more than when I see a poor dead possum on the side of the road. It could be eating ticks, but it's dead now, because somebody just didn't see it, because they were going a little too fast. So I'm really, Russell's also been involved in this as well, working with Davy on a regular basis, meeting with the, uh, the brass from Davy to try to get a different approach in place here. And it's, I believe it's making a difference. Uh, that was one item I, I just wanted to mention. Uh, next month, second meeting next month, we're going to have a discussion on Roundup or Glycophate. There's a number of municipalities here in Florida that have banned it. Some have just banned it on city property, town property. Uh, we, we need to understand what our options are. I've spoken to Keith, I've spoken to Julio about some potential, uh, solutions, and I'd like people to show up, because some vets, I, I had a conversation with Keith earlier, he had a conversation with a vet that's, I guess, fairly well-known in the area. And the, some of the vets don't feel like, you know, Roundup is what's killing our pets. We've lost two. The oncologist vet was pretty, uh, pretty convinced that we have a problem here and in Davy, and also over in Weston. Um, I put something out a month or so ago, and I'm getting phone calls from people in Davy, Cooper City, Weston, and Pines, that they're wondering why so many of their animals are dying of cancers as well. Maybe it's the dog food, but, you know, we know now that Roundup causes cancer in people, so, uh, if it's, if it's getting us, it's probably getting the critters that are walking in it, and then when they get home, one of... And then when they get home, what do they do? They lick their feet, they lick their tail, anything that might have been exposed. So we'll be talking about it the second meeting next month. I want to address one of the comments that was made directly of me by one of our residents here about helping me in the last campaign. This is a pretty serious issue because I'm being recorded right now and I need to speak the truth because I only speak the truth. I did get a lot of help from a resident and I was very happy to receive it. When you're going through a campaign, you hope everybody is helping you out as your friend. Here was the problem. That person was also all over code enforcement. I listened. I didn't agree with them, but I listened. Then, right after elections, so what are you going to do for me? And I went to the town attorney because I was really concerned that somebody was looking for a quid pro quo here. So I basically broke off communications with that person. I didn't want to be in any jeopardy because I don't work that way. I'm here to serve the community, not a person who helped me out in my campaign. You can go through my lists from what I had a report and you can go through all the residents on there, any business that's giving me money and ask them all whether I returned favors after I got elected. I don't work that way. That's not what we're up here for. We don't, we're not supposed to by law help those folks out. I mean, I help everybody out who gives me a call. If I can. When somebody's constantly telling me code enforcement's doing the wrong thing, then I find out that person ran code enforcement in another municipality, okay, then I listen a little bit more. But then when I compare what they're telling me about what I know to be true and also conversations with our code enforcement, you know what? There's nothing more I can do. I believe code enforcement works fine. Now, this big meeting that allegedly a red carpet was rolled out last night? I love how somebody got up and told us we need something for sunshine. We really need to keep an eye on ourselves from a sunshine perspective. Do you know if the council would have showed up there and we all started talking? We would all be in violation of sunshine laws. But that person doesn't know much about sunshine. He just knows how to throw shade. What it comes down to is the council can't speak about town business. From what I understand, that meeting was all about town business, stuff that mayor may not appear in front of us. But if it may, we can't address it. We can only address it in meetings like this that are publicly noticed in advance and the details have to be presented to the public. We just can't show up and help somebody with their problem as a council. It doesn't work that way. And of course, they're all welcome to show up here. But the other part that I understand from what some of the rumors about the meeting that occurred last night are, most of those people do have problems with code enforcement. They've all broken the law. They've broken the law and they are basically, they've lost their cases to code. Now, code enforcement doesn't make the decision. Code enforcement are like the police. They will charge you with an infraction. But they don't say whether you're going to get a fine. They don't say anything past that. They present their evidence to a special magistrate who makes the decision based on the evidence. And each one of those people that loses, they have the opportunity to appeal. Some of them do because they think they know better. And maybe they're right, maybe they're wrong. But when you go to court and you lose, you can keep escalating it. But sometimes people just don't know when to stop. And now they're going to get a bunch of people to go against the council on our code. This is something that, we do change when we find there are problems. When people come to us and report that there's an issue with the code, we try to address it the best we can. But if you keep violating the same law over and over and code enforcement shows up and code enforcement writes you a citation, there's not much the council can do. The law's in place. And if the council says they're going to help you, beware. Those are not the right people to be on the council. We've had council members and mayors in the past that all they want to do is help the residents get out of code enforcement violations. Really? Why don't you help them stop committing the code enforcement violations? That's the key thing. I don't have much else to say, Mayor. Thank you.
Thanks, Bob. All right. Just a couple of items I wanted to touch on. One is I wanted to bring the council and the residents up to date on the South Florida Wildlife Center. I had another meeting this week. We're making good progress on that. I'm super excited that we have now looked at it from a proposal standpoint of how we would divide up the property. Some of it would be residential. It's 30 acres. So the South Florida Wildlife Center does not need the whole 30 acres. So part of it would be potentially residential and part of it would be about half and half. Probably, let me say, like 60% would be residential, 40% would be the center itself. The Wildlife Center is what we're looking at and we would want to structure this. You'll remember that right now, this property has the restriction that it can only be educational, right? And so that's a pretty strong restriction on the property as it limits buyers. And so this has been something that the school board has not been happy with because it lowers the value of their property significantly, but it protects the town. So if we move forward with this, I just want you all to be aware. I don't want you to be caught off guard. It would be, we would be selling it. We would also be putting a, you know, that restriction, we would be lifting that restriction and making it into a residential, just like any other part of our town or the majority of our town. It would be zoned as a residential area. Not sure whether it would be, you know, which zoning, we could talk about that. I don't, you know. What we are talking about is large properties there. So, but we'll cover that ground. But I didn't, I wanted to bring up to date as much as I could to let you know that there was some issues actually left over from when we first sold it, the wetlands mitigation piece. But we're going to get that resolved. It's amazing, well, I won't go into it, but we'll get that resolved. It's amazing how things change over time, but we'll get that resolved. We're looking to set up our next meeting with Broward County School Board and when we can really put together a proposal for them. And I think we're in good shape. I'm really pleased at how it's moving forward. Appreciate everyone's, Russell's help on that. And Keith has been fantastic on it and just everybody coming together to make this up. This is going to be great. It's going to be great for the town. It's going to be great for Wildlife Center. They're super excited. They've looked at a lot of different sites. This one is head and shoulders above every other site they've looked at. So, all right. So I just wanted to bring you up on that. I did want to follow up on the one item there. Russell, if you can please get with Davy PD and find out the specifics on their body cams.
I was going to answer that during my comments.
Oh, you are? Perfect. Good. Thank you. You're ahead of me. Awesome. All right. And that concludes my comments. Keith, any legal comments?
Sure. Just real briefly, at the last council meeting, you may recall that you authorized me to seek enforcement of our order against Supreme Organics after they lost their appeal to the town. We did so no less than 48 hours thereafter. They called us and said, we agree, you know, and we're settling that case and they're going to agree that they can no longer operate a landscape business out of that property. So it took 48 hours, but that issue looks like it's resolved.
That's a big deal. I mean, this is a long time coming. When I was on the council, before I was off for two years, before I've been mayor for three and a half years, I gave a huge presentation on that. So it's been a journey, but I'm glad to see it all coming together.
Not to let all the air out of the balloon, but I did see one of their trucks on 178 today.
Hopefully it was moving out of town.
I won't say what direction it was moving in.
The agreement's not signed yet, but it will come back before you for final approval. We were sued this in the last two weeks by Atlas Investments based on a public records claim. Russell will tell you, you know, sometimes you get overwhelmed with records requests and don't respond as quickly as residents want them to respond or business owners want them to respond. But we will respond accordingly. It's not something that gives me any concern at all. Two other issues to bring up, as far as the red carpet event that they mentioned yesterday. While I appreciate that the mayor went, you're absolutely correct that it would have been a total violation of sunshine for other council members to attend. I never said I was going. Mr. Garotti cannot bring up a single correspondence from me saying that I was going. In fact, the only correspondence I wrote was that I can't go because all of them are represented by legal counsel and without their legal counsel being present, it would violate numerous laws in Florida bar rules and as such, I would not attend. And in fact, I copied the council, blind copied the council on my response. So all of you know that I responded that I would not be attending at that event. In response to a comment that Councilmember Jablonski made because he called me right before the meeting and asked. There are municipalities that will do public background checks, not financial checks, but public background checks. So if someone has publicly noticed criminal records or publicly noticed bankruptcies, they will do it and will post it online for the, you know, anyone to read and review so that everyone is on the same page because you're right. There's a lot of chit chat out there and I've received calls also saying, hey, how is this person allowed to run for office? How is someone allowed to run with bankruptcies? How are they allowed to run with criminal background? If you would like, there is the ability where you could do your public search, go back 10 years, 15 years, whatever you all want and just post the results online and then it will be fair and equitable for everyone without the additional rumors and everything else. But that's in your discretion, but that is what I found out based on our call. So other than that, no further comment.
Can I chime in here? Yeah, I would like to see it online, the results of all that and say, go back 15 years. If anybody has other thought. Seeing no other thoughts.
I just, I prefer not to go down that road, to be honest with you. You know, residents can look that up on their own. You know, I... I'm interested in who people are today. Keith, any, I mean, anybody else have any?
I got nothing to hide. You want to run a report on me?
I got nothing to hide either. I don't misunderstand my...
No, I'm not suggesting you do. That wasn't my intent. My point is that, you know, we're constantly assaulted with corruption charges. I got nothing to hide. So if this is the way to put it out there, I don't have a problem with it.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking.
Is there any, David, Jim?
No problem. Steve, I have no criminal background to share with anyone. Nothing, I don't have.
That wasn't my question.
He said nothing to hide either.
I don't have a damn thing to hide or whatever.
The question is not whether we have anything to hide. That's not the question. The question is, is this where, is this the proper way we want to take our town? That's the question.
Like I said, you can leave it up to the...
It's not, it's not public comment.
A couple of years ago, we talked about...
Yeah, you can look at, the residents can do the research. If they're interested, the residents can look it up.
I don't think we should be in this.
I mean, I have not done, but you know, but I will be looking. I will tell you that. You know, I will.
I'll be looking as well.
Right. It sparked my interest this evening. I damn sure tell you that.
I mean, I don't see this as any different than that. You know, public disclosure. We're going to have to produce all our financials.
Right.
You know, I mean, I don't see, I don't see where this is a problem, to be honest with you. I mean, people need to know who they're going to vote for.
That stuff has a way of coming out in the campaigns.
Yeah, and it has a way of coming out on the dais too. I mean, you know, like tonight. You know, as far as that goes. But I'm all for publishing it.
Sounds like Eric has a motion. Is there a second for the motion?
Didn't know I made a motion, but okay.
It sounds like a motion to me.
I was just saying I'm okay with it.
All right. Keith, any other, any other comments? No? All right. Russell?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. So just a couple of things I wanted to bring you up to speed on related to the presentation we had earlier today with the restroom facility. I did want to just put on the record and remind council that we do have a requirement to obligate the ARPA funding before the end of this year. Doesn't mean that we have to pay for the project in full, but we have to issue POs and basically obligate the funding. So time is of the essence on all of these projects, including the restroom building. So while we certainly want to, you know, kind of refine the approach with the architect, you know, we have to be mindful of not having a protracted, long drawn out design process and bring something back hopefully that council and the residents will feel is palatable. So.
Good.
Be working hard on that for you. Did want to update you on the fire station property acquisition progress. So we did make an offer to the church site for $650,000 and that was countered by them with a number of $922,000, including the cost to construct the parking lot, which we estimate to be somewhere about $750,000 to $900,000 for that parcel. We're currently reviewing the possibility of utilizing a secondary parcel that's currently owned by the town at Country Estates Park, just as another secondary location to look at. We're going to basically weigh the benefits of both locations, see what makes sense and then make a recommendation to the town council at the next meeting as to what we should do. So I just wanted to make you aware of that. We also have been approached by...
So that, I'm sorry, that's going to be an agenda item on the next meeting?
It'll be, if we have everything where we need it to be, it may be an actual item for action on the next agenda, but it may just be another progress item. So.
Thank you.
Okay, you're welcome. I've been advised by Davy PD that is, I'm sorry, Davy Fire, that is part of our public safety agreement with the town of Davy. That they had acquired the quote to go ahead and replace the fire rescue vehicle, which is basically an ambulance. We had in our negotiations with them estimated that cost at the time to be about $450,000. But as you see the way of the world, everything, all vehicles are going up now. So that cost is, they have an actual quote and that number is now $493,000 and almost basically rounding it off to $494,000. Thankfully, our finance team has been on that since we entered into the contract. We've been putting money away aggressively for that and currently we have about $390,000 towards that acquisition. But what we would like to do is go ahead and issue a PO to do that, so that we can go ahead and order that vehicle. But currently we have a shortfall, obviously. So what I'm going to ask is that the council allow us to take about $104,000, $105,000 or $104,000 from unassigned fund balance so that we can encumber the money, issue a PO and then basically have Davy order that vehicle. It is under back order right now. We've been advised that we probably won't get the vehicle until like 2026. But the benefit of issuing the PO now is obviously we lock in the pricing and, you know, we basically won't spend the money until we actually take delivery or Davy takes delivery of it. So I'm going to ask your permission to, and your authorization to go ahead and take $104,000 out of unassigned fund balance for that acquisition.
And basically you're just encumbering those dollars. You're not, they're still staying in our bank account.
Correct, correct. And in fiscal year '25, we would have assigned more money into that account anyway and put us even closer. But again, you know, they're asking for us to do it now, order the vehicle because of the back order timeframe. So this way we can just issue a PO. We're not going to spend any money. We're just going to issue a PO, but I can't even issue a PO unless I have the money in the account. So what I'm asking for is the authorization to transfer from unassigned fund balance.
Yeah, I think that makes, that's the most prudent way to go forward. I'm very comfortable with it. Yeah, Bob?
Russell, just to clarify, when you encumber the money, you've got to have that money on hand from then until you issue the PO on it.
Correct.
So where, this isn't something that we move in and out of reserves. It goes into the appropriate account and it sits there until we're ready to put the deposit down on it.
That is correct.
Okay, thank you. I just want to make sure everybody's clear.
Yep. Okay, thank you. So can I have a motion or council support formally to do that?
Yeah, I make a motion that we...
Second.
...forward with that we encumber 100. Do you have the exact amount or?
$104,000 should cover. Correct, O'Neal?
Yes. It's $103,750, but $104,000 I can totally support.
Just a question about that then. So we have a hard quote that if we take the money now, that number's not going to go up. We don't need to put any contingency in that.
That's the number that they're giving us, including, and I should have, I'm sorry, I didn't make a copy, but I can send you a copy of all of that tomorrow. So, yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Is there, is there a second to?
I second.
You did second it. Okay. Is there any discussion on that item?
Got to get an ambulance.
Seeing none. Is there any public discussion on the item?
I'm shocked.
Noel Hollingsworth. As long as there is no, say, 3% or anything else that they... As long as there is no, say, 3% or anything else that they add to it or contingency, as long as it's a fixed, firm, solid number today. And if it's going to go up, then why bother?
Right. Thank you, Neil.
That was my question.
Yeah, it is.
Seeing no other public comment, public comment is closed. Go ahead, just come up to the mic, please.
Now, I don't know your rules, because I don't do this often. However, Mr. Polyakov brought up.
Please state your name for the record.
Melissa Erdely.
Thank you.
Mr. Polyakov brought up public records requests. May I just ask a question in reference to that?
No, the questions need to be on the topic that we're discussing at the moment.
Okay, so when he brings it up is when I should ask to speak?
Yeah. Well, if it's not, if it's not an item that's on the, an agenda item on there, you would bring it up during your public comment. Okay.
Okay, but we're not allowed to put in the paper for the public comment this far into public comments.
Right.
And if it wasn't brought up, it wasn't something I would have thought about.
You would bring it up next time we get together.
Okay, I'll do that.
It is a fixed quote. There is no escalator.
Good, good.
The quote is valid for 30 days, so you just have to approve it.
So we need to get.
We got to get moving on this, yes. The date of the quote is actually April 1st.
Because with the way inflation is going, we better lock this baby in.
Absolutely. So we need to take a vote.
All right. Okay, I think we're ready to call the roll.
Councilmember Albritton?
Yes.
Councilmember Hartman?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonski?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kaczynski?
Yes.
Mayor Bright Cruz?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay, Mayor, just have two other quick things. Jim Lasky mentioned the meeting tomorrow, Friday, April 12th, at 6:00. It's going to be taking place in the city of Miramar Commission Chambers, for those that want to attend. It's to take a stand against the Miami-Dade incinerator meeting, and that's being held at the city of Miramar Commission Chambers, 2300 Civic Center Place, if anybody wants to attend. Just wanted to get that out there.
Thank you for sharing that, and Jim, thanks for bringing that up to our attention.
And Steve, I read some comments you made in the Sentinel this morning about supporting Miramar, and how they really do need a seat at the table with Miami-Dade, since they're right on the border.
Yeah, they really did. It was, I was honored to be able to go down there and speak on their behalf and stand with them. At the end of the day, to me, the biggest travesty of it all is that this is literally right across the fence from Miramar, right across the fence, and they have zero opportunity to be part of the process. And that's not right. I don't care what it is, that's not right. And so, yeah, thanks, Bob, for bringing that up, yeah.
The last comment that I had, Mayor, was a resident brought up the question about the body worn cameras. Davie PD has been utilizing and rolling out the body worn camera program since March, so they are starting, you know, basically, most of the officers have them at this point, but not everyone may have them at this point. Lieutenant Raven at the Davie PD is the point person on there. As far as the policy, be more than happy to request the policy, see if I can get a copy of it and provide it.
Thank you, Russell. All right, very good. Item number 12, please.
This is an ordinance by the town council of the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, amending the Town of Southwest Ranches Code of Ordinances and ordinance number 2014-003 to specify the elevation of manufactured homes in flood hazard areas, providing for applicability and severability, and providing for an effective date.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. This is basically a housekeeping item to ensure that we're in compliance with FEMA, and if a disaster hits, that we can all get our FEMA checks. So it's important, but it is, it is basically a housekeeping item. Is there any council comment on this item?
No.
Seeing none, is there any public comment on this item? Seeing none, public comment closed. If you can please call the roll.
Councilmember Albritton?
Yes.
Councilmember Hartman?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonski?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kaczynski?
Yes.
Mayor Bright Cruz?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. Item number 13, please.
This is a resolution of the town council of the town of Southwest Ranches approving a youth agreement between the town of Southwest Ranches and Bram Group LLC, doing business as I-9 Sports LLC, which establishes the scope and compensation to the town for Southwest Ranches youth sports programming, authorizing the mayor, town administrator, and town attorney to enter an agreement, providing an effective date.
Mayor, if I may?
Yes.
I'll make a motion, but I'd like you to second it.
Thank you for allowing me to do that.
Make a motion to accept this.
I'll second that item. Thank you. I'm not used to seconding.
This is your, this is your.
It is my issue. Thank you for noting that, Gary. I sincerely appreciate that. I'm super excited about this. This is I-9, and the item that's going to follow are two different organizations that are going to put together the programs for our kids. I can't tell you how excited I am about this December. Thank you, thank you, thank you for all the work that you've put in on this. Awesome job. And I'm just, I'm just thrilled that, you know, as we grow and develop as a town, we want to hang on to the rural nature of who we are. That's who we are, that's why we came out here. But we need to provide more and more for our families and our kids, and this is going to be our initial programs to, for our youngest kids, for soccer, for T-ball, whatever, whatever the community is most excited about. It'll be starting up this summer. Actually, I think the other item is the one that starts up this summer. I-9 is actually going to be starting up in the fall, two different programs, but it's all about the kids. We'll also be getting some senior activities in place. I can't be more excited about this. I appreciate very much the council getting behind this and supporting this item, and I think this is something that, this is a legacy item. This is a legacy item. This is an item that we start today and will go for as long as there is a ranches. And kids will grow up, and they will remember the first time they kicked that ball around on, you know, in the park in Country Estates. So this is, this is an awesome item. From a mechanic standpoint, I hate to step away from how happy I am that this is going on to some of the mechanics, but I do want to touch on just a couple of the mechanics of it. You'll notice on this that the town is not paying these organizations to do this. They will be collecting it through dues and things like that, and we actually get a portion of that back. There were some questions from residents about, hey, what we get, is it going to cover the maintenance of the whole? There is an increase in maintenance for these, for the property there, the fields there, because we got to bring them up to speed, and we got to maintain them, so that they're safe and in good shape for when the kids go out there and use them for the sports. And so there is an increase from that side for it, but remember that this, these are only used by these organizations for, you know, a few hours, and that for the rest of that time, our residents will be enjoying this increased maintenance as well. So I'm super excited about it. Once again, thank you, council. Thank you, residents, for supporting this, and looking forward to going out there and seeing it all become a reality.
Mayor?
Yes.
Just one quick note from a legal standpoint. Vice Mayor Kaczynski contacted us about two provisions in the contract to look at. We agreed with him and made two small changes. We clarified a little bit the indemnification language, added in a word that he wanted to clarify something. And then we further clarified in the background check section that the background check will ensure, help to ensure that the individuals who are brought there can work with children. So we made those two changes. I just want to tell you, the version that was modified is the one that you're approving tonight.
Okay. So do we have it, we're good? Or do we need to modify it?
Approved, subject to the modifications.
Yeah, I'll make that motion.
And I'll second it.
Good. Works better that way.
Just a point on this. I really want to be, I want to see this successful, because we're going to put a lot of energy into it. I think we need some sort of a marketing program, because we know the newsletter doesn't reach everybody. We know the board's out on the road, reached some people, so you're chomping at the bit, you've already thought about it.
Yeah, yeah, that's part of why we're bringing in these organizations. They have the connections, they already are working with a lot of the youth in our community around here, so they have the connections. December, why don't you come up here? You can, you can speak to this 10 times better than I can. Oh, if that's okay with you, Russell.
December, would you please come up and speak on this issue? Thank you.
Please, Russell.
My apologies, Russell.
That's right.
Hello, Mayor and Council. December Loretano Haynes, Parks Recreation Open Space Manager, and I'm very, very pleased to be at this stage of the meeting. And I want to let you know, by the way, that both of the contractors are here, and they've learned about Southwest Ranches quite a lot tonight. So I would like to introduce to you to Mr. Di Molina. Armando Di Molina represents I-9, and that's the contract that you're talking about right now. And Mr. Di Molina actually ran sports programming right over here at Masters Academy for a decade. That arrangement was, you know, he didn't approach me, I went looking for him. And when I found out that there were sports programs, and I knew that we were trying to do, we, you know, we put this together, and he's been cool with everything that we've asked of him, and he's very excited to do this, and he knows what he's got out there at Country Estates. It's not a real sports field, but we're going, this is phase one. We'll see where this all will take us, so. But he knows how to market it. He's got a good team behind him, and I'm just really happy to welcome him and welcome the program to Southwest Ranches and say, yay, you know, we're getting there.
Welcome.
Okay.
And we have the other individual as well?
Yes, and we also, well, because that's a different item, Mayor, but.
Oh, yeah. While you're up, just go ahead.
Okay, I'd also like to introduce you to Mr. Fareed Usulamani. I hope I said that right, Fareed. Fareed is representing Skyhawk Sports Academy, who's going to be doing some early childhood sports education programs at the Rolling Oaks Park, inside the barn, Monday, on Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Thursdays. We'll still be able to get the yoga group in there after the kids are gone. And Mr. Usulamani similarly has been okay with everything that we've asked of him. He's eager to bring programs. We're going to see what we can get. We want the community to get excited about this, so we really need to put it out there, and these companies do know how to market it, but we'll be helping with that as well.
Perfect.
So.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Any other comments from the council?
Public comment.
Seeing none, is there any public comment on the item?
Noel Hollingsworth, 199th Avenue. The first question is, what are the hours that they're going to have the park? Number two, what are they going to do with the park? Because you said T-ball. Well, you need a T-ball, a baseball diamond for it. Are we going to be building it? And how much is that going to cost? Are, if it's going to be soccer, are we required to put the goal, goals in, that sort of stuff? The equipment? What is the, I hear nothing about it. But I did see $14,432 or something like that for maintenance. What's the additional maintenance? Is that picking up all the trash that they leave behind? Or what is it? Are they going to take care of that? What are they doing? What? You haven't said anything. I called the chair of the Parks Board, and they couldn't tell me either. So what is happening that we're just going to give a blanket approval? What are the rules that they're going to take? What are the hours? What are the sports? What's going to be taking place there? And what's the $14,000 going to be used for? Thank you.
When this was brought up in conversation, I think this was on one of the advisory boards, youth sports is incredibly the best community building you can absolutely do. I swam, believe it or not, this fat guy you see here. I was a swimmer. Many things got resolved in the pool after, you know, it's incredible with youth sports, any, any, any youth group, that, you know, people get together. It builds community in the sense that you see families develop, you see them, you know, their age groups grow. And I actually recognized Mr. Usulamani when I walked in. I'm like, I know this guy from somewhere, and it's a small world, let me tell you. His management company is, they do a good job at what they do, and this is something that's overdue. And on the part of covering expenses, we had a few questions on that yesterday at our red carpet event, without the carpet. But I'm sure, with the passion that December has, I'm sure that that is her first priority. Her, the way you manage a department, it's, there's no doubt, I'm sure that'll get covered. Money's money, right? Everything has a cost to it. Everything breaks, fields have to be redone. As long as we cover costs and we take care of our real estate, and I think whoever comes and enjoys this, we have a lot of responsible residents, mostly is going to be Weston, Southwest Ranches, I'm assuming, wherever they come from. You know, it's, well, it happens sometimes, but I think if we have a proper Parks manager, which her work is exemplary, I think covering costs, seeing where that goes, I think it's only a few hours that it's going to be used anyway, but it's a wonderful idea, and it builds community. You know, I've seen in a pool setting where parents actually have discussions, and they work things out, so very good, very good idea, good job. This is positive news. At least we ended on a positive note tonight. Thank you, guys.
I think this is a wonderful program. I was just gonna, at our Parks Board meeting last night, I believe, what was said is that they would be using the park on Saturdays. I don't remember the hours. December can probably get better.
I haven't given them yet.
Oh, I thought it was more like in the day. I think they're just using the field area of the park. It's not, it's not the pavilion and the other side of Country Estates. It's more they're, they're over there. They'll have, I guess, their tents, their chairs, and whatever else you bring out to the things, but I think it's a wonderful addition to the town. It's just another benefit. I don't think this is adding anything to any taxes, and whatever that extra maintenance is, and it's just another benefit for all the residents who are paying taxes to now have that benefit for their kids. Because I can tell you, when my kids were little, we kind of had to join with a lot of things that were going on in Weston, but we were always kind of the outsider, because you're not from there, but I think it's wonderful.
Thank you. Any other? Yeah.
Ian Kowalski, Rolling Oaks. I like this, I like this for our kids. A lot of our kids play these games. I know we go to Weston, we go over to, I forget the name, my wife had to tell me, but they use that all Saturday. So I just make sure that when we use this and we allow other people to contract and get some benefit to the help of the maintenance, which is going to take, of course, you know, people are going to walk, and people are going to trot, and you have all that, that's expected. I'd rather spend that money than the $3.3 million and the other thing, but just to make sure that we reserve some time, the time that the residents would have, the Saturdays, those kind of times, for use for our residents, too. But overall, I like this idea. Good job.
Thank you. Seeing no other public comment, public comment closed.
Wow, we did something right. Amazing.
I'm very excited about this, I really am.
Just a, just a quick comment. Um, several months ago, I worked with Andy to get some disposable garbage bags out there and a garbage pail, and it's become a de facto dog park. And when you go out there on Saturdays, lots of people are using it now as a dog park. When we've got our date, when we're gonna get started on this, maybe we wanna put a sign up a month in advance, saying the dog park closes on such and such a date, so people don't show up expecting, and now there's five hundred kids, hopefully five hundred kids out there. So something to think about, so those folks don't feel like this was just ripped away from them.
Yeah, we may wanna just, like, cordon off an area that says, you know, this, we may wanna cordon off an area where, you know, dogs. The kids are gonna be running around here, please keep your dogs off.
Right, right.
Yeah.
Well, there are bags and things, they're, one of the things, I noticed people were using it every weekend, and they weren't cleaning up after their dogs, so December can explain it again, but-
Yeah.
-you know, there's facilities now for them to clean up after their dogs, so it's being used quite a bit.
Yeah, I know it is, actually, yeah. I have some neighbors that go over there. Um, Russell, I wonder, it sounded, I think maybe December might be able to answer some of the questions that came up?
Yeah, I'll call December up, but just, I can just start to, uh, answer some of them. So the programming is meant to be for Saturdays, the times have yet to be determined, I know December probably has some ideas of when she would ideally like to use that. So as far as any concern about utilizing the park or over utilizing the park, it's only contemplated for Saturday. So Sundays would still be available, there's no days during the week that are contemplated, so.
Are we talking about all day Saturday?
Uh, no, the time's to be determined, but I'll-
Right.
Yeah, I'll have December come up and discuss that, but basically, right now, it's not all day Saturday, but it's-
I think it was.
Yeah.
December?
Um, I'm, I'm really glad that those questions were asked, because I realize I didn't give very much information for you guys, we're just busy being happy about this, but what, what these contracts are, are use agreements, similar to what we have with the farmer's market. So, the contractor is bringing pretty much a turnkey operation to the site, and the town is not managing these things. What we did was, we made sure in our agreements that the town is protected, that town residents are given preferential pricing, preferential priority. I know that the idea of children from other cities coming and playing will, you know, squeeze us out, that's not gonna happen. And, um, for the Country Estates, the I-9 agreement will provide, at this point, we're planning soccer, flag football, and potentially T-ball. We're not building anything special on the field. I-9 is going to bring their own equipment out every weekday, or every weekend when they come, and they'll, they'll, the only pieces that we'll have there on the park on a regular basis are gonna be the soccer goals, which will be locked up against the fence. Um, they belong to I-9, they're not, but, we're not buying any equipment. Um, and the Saturday program is gonna begin, it'll, it'll run this way. The youth, the youngest age groups will start first, they'll have a practice and a game, and then the next age group comes in, and they'll have a practice and a game. And it will depend upon the number of participants and the age groups of the participants, which programs run and how long they run. But right now, our use agreement stipulates, I think, that we begin, uh, allowing him to be there to set up the program at seven thirty on Saturday morning, and then it runs until it's done, um, whatever age groups finish. Um, and if you wanted to hear how those things typically go, I'm sure that the contractor would be glad to tell you. But what I'm expecting is that mostly on Saturdays, that, that ball field area that we fenced in a couple of years ago is gonna be in use on Saturdays for most of the day. However, the playground, the picnic areas, the trails, the parking areas, those are still gonna be open to the public, just like at the Equestrian Park, when we have people riding in the Equestrian Park, you can still go, sit in the pavilion, you could still rent the pavilion at the Equestrian Park, you could do that at Country Estates as well. This will not impact reservations. If we have a, a reserved party happening in the, um, site, a private individual wants to make a party, that reservation will be fine, and the sports people will be notified that, you know, we hope that they will understand that the pavilion is for a reservation on that day. If there is a town event on any of these days, we will give our contractors notice in advance so that they can adjust their schedules, so that, you know, if, uh, Country Estates wants to have their annual barbecue, that usually happens on a Saturday, we'll get that information in advance, so he can schedule around that. So we're not expecting, um, to bump residents' use of the, the park at all, or the pavilion at all. Um, and a little brief note about that, the uses on the dog park, I did make note of that, and I think that's a really good plan to sort of help the community understand what's gonna be coming up.
Right.
This, these programs will start in October, so we've got good, a good period of time to get that going. Um, and, uh, they are using the facilities that we put out there, and I think the moment that we put that fence up, it became a perfect place for them to ride horses and walk their dogs, so, you know, uh, we're happy to see people using the parks.
Exactly.
Right? And this is only gonna add to that, I think.
Yep.
And, um, were there other questions that I get?
I think you got it.
Yeah. Okay. I hope that-
Any others? All December's up, any other?
Yeah.
No, I think we're good.
Okay.
Thank you. All right.
Call a question.
Yeah. Can you please call the roll?
Councilmember Albritton?
Yes.
Councilmember Hartman?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kozinski?
Yes.
Mayor Bright Cruz?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. Item number fourteen, please.
This is a resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Southwest Ranches, approving a use agreement between the Town of Southwest Ranches and Usulamani Management LLC, doing business as Southeast Florida Skyhawks, which establishes the scope and compensation to the town for the Southwest Ranches youth sports programming, authorizing the mayor, town administrator, and town attorney to enter into an agreement and providing an effective date.
Motion to-
Mayor and Keith, if I may, are there any changes to the contract?
Yeah, it's the exact same changes as the last one, so if you could please make your motion as amended. Motion to approve as amended.
And I'll second that. Thanks.
Thought I'd bring that up.
Yeah. Good. All right, is there any, uh, any additional comments on this item? Seeing none, is there any public comment on this item?
Noah Hollingsworth, 199th Avenue. Again, you got five thousand dollars additional for maintenance. That was not mentioned at all by you guys. And number two, the barn is fairly used right now, quite a lot. What if someone wants to rent it for something Friday night, and they need to get in there to set the place up ahead of time? How is that going to work? If it's already rented out to this other group, or given to this other group for free? Also, we have town events that take place there. The car show, uh, other things there. How is that going to work? How is, same thing for the, uh, Country Estates barbecue out at the other place. How's that gonna work on a Saturday? What are we going to do? You have said nothing about any of the rules, regulations, or anything that's going to take place. It's all nebulous, we're, it's a great idea, and I think it is a pretty good idea, but I'd sure like to see the rules and constraints before, because it hasn't been discussed in, by the board. It definitely hasn't been discussed in infrastructure, hasn't been discussed anywhere. It's just, oh, we're going to do it, and it's going to be done. We wave our magic wand, and I haven't heard anything from this council about it. So what, let's hear some rules, regulations. Is Country Estates now going to have to find a different place for its barbecue? Is the car show going to have to move somewhere else?